Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the regular city council meeting for September 3rd. If you would, please silence your cellphones or put them on vibrate so that we can proceed without that kind of a distraction. I am chairing the meeting today because the mayor is out of town. However, I believe he may have called in on teams and so he is here but he will be a disembodied voice and I'll be here chairing the meeting. Roll call, please.
Blessam?
Here.
Fuller?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Here.
Item two is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, the mayor asked that, since he's not here to deliver it in person, he asked if we would defer the mayor's report for this meeting and so we will honor that request. That brings us to item four, which, first, item 4.1, which is the city manager's report.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council and public. First and foremost, as always, there's a city manager report prepared and available in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that at this time if there is any. If not, if I may, I'd like to call our city engineer, Mr. Lance Meyer, up to give a report on the Third Street Bridge. We did have a press release go out on that today about reopening that and so I'd like Lance to give the council and the public a brief update on that.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you. So, we did get the report, or preliminary report, from the DOT. It hasn't been stamped and signed yet. That'll come here shortly. But we did get the load rating results and essentially what the load rating says is that we can open the bridge fully to traffic, meaning that we don't have to post it or restrict trucks or anything like that. So that's good news for us. However, Pier Three, which is one of the piers on the north side of the bridge, where we've seen some of the pictures of the spalling concrete, that does need an urgent repair. So the question back to the DOT is, well, what does urgent mean? Does that mean we need to do an emergency project and fix that now or can we design something over the winter time and bid something in the spring? And the answer to that was, the load rating was good enough where we can design a project this fall and over the winter and then bid something out in the spring. So, that is my recommendation to you is for us to advance a project here this fall so that we can procure a consultant to help us design a project and move forward with that repair. And what that repair will help us do is to make sure that that pier is repaired so that doesn't further deteriorate in the event then that we'd have to load rate the bridge or restrict the amount of traffic that could go over it. So, that is my recommendation to you is to move forward with the project. Once that project is completed, we need to start looking long-term at what we want to do with Third Street Bridge. It is 88 years old. In bridge terms, that's an old bridge. It's served its purpose. Generally, if you can get 50 to 75 years out of a structure, that's a good service life for a bridge. So, the fact that it's made it to 88 years is good news for us. We're going to do what we can to keep maintaining and servicing the life of that bridge to get some more years out of it. But we're at the point now where we need to start planning for likely a replacement. Probably a study here in the near future to start prepping us for a decision on, do we invest additional maintenance dollars into this structure or do we invest further and look for replacements? So that's a future decision that the council will have to make. Step one tonight is to probably start talking about a project here this fall, bid in the spring, and construction next year. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Any questions for our city engineer?
Mike?
Lance, what will that look like in '25? I mean, we've already set our preliminary budget numbers. What kind of moving around will that look like for you for next year?
So currently in the '25 budget, right now we have $350,000 in the budget for, that was supposed to be for engineering costs for the '27 project. So now, if we take that project and maybe pause it or that gets reimagined or something else happens with that, we do have some dollars available in the '25 budget for a potential construction project. That's probably enough to repair this pier cap. We haven't done any engineering on it, so I don't know if replacing the pier cap could, you know, grow into something else. We do not have any dollars in the '24 budget for us to start engineering. So we'd have to come up with some dollars to hire a consultant to do that. So, what my plan would be, if council would green light a project, is we would start a procurement and we'd go out and select somebody, we'd negotiate a scope and a fee, and then we'd bring that back to council for consideration. And if you'd approve a contract, then we'd do a budget amendment, take dollars, and start the engineering here yet this year.
Any other questions? Paul?
Thank you, Mark. Lance, what is, what sort of flood protection projects do we have in the area that would group this as part of that project or are we done in that area?
I'd probably have to defer that to the Surers River Joint Board. I know portions of MI5 are finishing up and there will be a tie-in at some point to get the project underneath the bridge, but... Not a question, but just a follow-up. So, since we started removing the barriers today and opening that back up, I know there's been some questions in the public as far as how soon Railroad Avenue will be open as well. And I just want to remind the public that our current construction contract with the contractor has a deadline of November 10th. But our goal and our hope is that that will be open and available for public traffic as well this fall, November 10th, hopefully being, worst-case scenario, on when that is open again to the public. So, good news for some major traffic arteries being available within our community here in the very near future. And I have nothing else on my city manager report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, do we need to take an action tonight relative to going forward? Or Lance, I think the sense is that we need to figure out what kind of project that would be and have you come back to us with that information?
I don't know that staff is ready for action tonight. We would prepare that for a future council meeting, for council consideration in the near future.
Okay. That's agreeable. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item 4.2 is the city attorney's report.
Chairman Janser, members of the council, I submitted a written report and I can stand for any questions regarding the same at this time.
Are there any questions of the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Item five is consent items. I have been asked to pull item 5.8 and 5.12. Are there any other consent items in Section 5 that anybody would like pulled, either here on the dais or in the audience? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the remaining items.
Second.
Moving second to approve the remaining items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That takes us to item 5.8. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Move to approve it? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, second, okay. Rob, you pulled this, I believe?
I did, yes. Thank you, Mark.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to pull this and I don't know who this is a question for, but I was reading through it. Sorry, my iPad all of a sudden won't show it because it wants me to vote. Lance, okay. So, I see what the cost of the project is, $80,000 and some change that we're going to assess these people. Can you help me understand what the 25% administrative cost is that we're tacking on top? Because it seems a little bit excessive to me after these guys are having to pay all these fees for the sidewalks that we're going to tack on 25% as well. So, can you just help me there?
Sure. Mr. President Alderman Fuller, it's been a longstanding practice of the city. I don't know when it started. So I've kind of just inherited this and ran with it over the years, but it covers the engineering that our department performs, our admin fees that is covered by multiple city departments such as finance and others, our carrying costs, we have to go out and bond for that, and then some of our miscellaneous fees like sending certified letters and other costs. So, when you add up those different percentages, it comes to 25. I know, I think Grand Forks uses about 22. Other cities charge different percentages. It just depends on the community. So you're allowed to charge. Doesn't mean you have to, but you can recoup your costs to administer these special assessments.
Can I continue? Thank you. So, so our bonding, our administrative work, everything, we spent about $20,000 coming up with fixing their sidewalks? Is that, I mean, I'm just trying to figure this out because that seems like a lot of money on top of a lot of money that they're paying for their sidewalks. I mean, so, all these people pay property tax in, which pays the salaries to the people of the city, and then in order to do the city's work, we got to charge them another 25% on top of their sidewalks? I'm having trouble with that, quite honestly.
Sure. Mr. President Alderman Fuller, so in our case, for the engineering costs, it's an offset back to the general fund. So, for our department to go out and inspect these, to administer it and whatnot, I think we charge 10%. So, whatever the cost of the work is for that in particular property, we multiply that by 10% and then that cost is charged back to that homeowner and then that cost is then brought in and offsets the engineering department's cost on the general fund. So, we used to do that on other projects as well. Helps lower the costs of the tax base.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
No.
Janser? Olson?
Motion carries.
Motion passes.
That takes us to item 5.12. What are the wishes of the council?
I would move approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have motion?
Second.
By Rob? Discussion, Mike, go ahead, please.
So I had this one pulled. One of the things, and whether it's Chris or if someone else could maybe answer a question for me, what I'd like to understand on this one, this is another spot where the city is acting as a pass-through entity for federal funds coming back into the city to help, you know, what's intended to be a great program and something that's very much necessary in our city. But as we've seen now over the last couple months, we've seen lots of instances where the city acts in this capacity and I'd like to understand what our obligations are should the entity itself not perform what it needs to and what the entity needs to be performing. Because again, this one isn't a huge dollar amount, but I want to make sure I understand what we're on the hook for if they don't perform.
I don't know if Dave or Chief Klug could answer that question. We also have the director for the Domestic Violence Crisis Center here tonight.
City Finance Director?
Mr. President Alderman Blessam, in a lot of these situations, the grants, a requirement of the grant is that it's awarded to a government entity. The domestic violence wouldn't qualify for that, so we act as the pass-through. The domestic violence program also works a lot with our court system, municipal court system, and the police department with a lot of the domestic violence training and activities that they have. So we do work hand in hand. There is very little risk that we would have to this. We're just the pass-through entity. But there is some monitoring requirements that we'd have to follow up on to make sure they're meeting the terms of the grant.
If I can continue. So I understand, I guess, when you say a low amount of risk, with the other programs that we've been addressing over the last few weeks, would you say that some of those were higher risk than this? And we knew that? Or are they all low-risk, but sometimes they do run into problems? Or how do they work out?
Mr. President Alderman Blessam, I think it varies depending on the program and the programs included in that. For example, the NDR program was $74.5 million. It's much larger, a lot more complex, a number of different programs within that grant. So there's a lot more complexity in that. So that inherently, I think, would bring along a little bit more risk. This is something that's been a longstanding relationship with Domestic Violence Crisis Center. It's an annual basis. It's something that we've done, I hate to use this word, but as a matter of routine for a number of years. And so I would classify that as being a lot lower risk level.
Any other discussion or questions for the City Finance Director? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That takes us to our action items. Item number six is a public hearing. It is recommended that the city council adopt the amendment, or the alignment presented by the Surers River Joint Board and approve the acquisition of 11 additional properties. I believe the Public Works Director is going to give us a presentation on this.
Thank you, President Janser, members of council. So, I guess before we get into the action item, I have Ryan Ackerman with Ackerman Engineering and Jerry Benz with Houston Engineering to kind of take us through where this project has been for the last, oh boy, about six years. We've been working on the Maple Diversion project for many years. There's a lot of parts and pieces and issues with the alignment that we've worked through. So, good news is we've come to an alignment that, I guess, checks a lot of the boxes for transportation, railroad issues and things of that nature. But unfortunately, it comes at the cost of 11 additional properties. So, we want to take you through that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan Ackerman. He can take you through some of it.
Good evening, President Janser, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Ryan Ackerman, Ackerman Esfold, work as the administrator for the Surers River Joint Board. Jen's queuing up a presentation for us here. Just a few things that we're going to cover here today, just an overview of the project. Talk about some of the alignment constraints with the Maple Diversion. Cover our preferred alignment. Talk about the path that we've been on and what we see as a path forward. We'll be here to answer your questions as well. Want to also emphasize that it's not lost on us as the engineers in terms of how impactful these types of changes are on members of the public. We've been working on this for, you know, I'm going to say about five years and it's taken lots of different twists and turns and we're trying to satisfy several masters with three railroad entities, the Corps of Engineers, the state and other agencies as well. And we've ultimately landed on an alignment and an alternative that we feel is going to work and serve the citizens of Minot. But again, we also acknowledge that it comes at a pretty high cost socially. So, want to make sure that's not overlooked as we talk through some of the techie details here. So my intent here is just to cover from a high level what we've been doing with flood protection and what our strategy is, again, from that 30,000-foot level. And then I'll turn it over to Jerry Benz with Houston Engineering to talk about the details associated with the Maple Diversion. What I've got up on the screen right now is the phases that are complete or that are otherwise under construction associated with Minot Milestone 1. There's a connecting link that'll land in the middle of that slide. That's the federal plan, also known as Phase MI4 or the Maple Diversion. This is the piece of the project that has a federal interest. We've secured about $61.5 million through the Corps of Engineers for the construction of this project. Once we get this phase of the project done, it completes Minot Milestone 1 and then the regulatory flood plain transitions from what you see on the screen to what's shown on the next slide here. So we're able to remove about 60% of Minot Valley residents from that regulatory... So we're able to remove about sixty percent of Minot Valley residents from that regulatory floodplain. So this will be a really important and beneficial aspect of the project once we get it completed. Our focus after Milestone One is actually being, we're actually doing this concurrently. You've in previous meetings concurred with the Joint Board's approval of bids for Phase MI Seven. That's a part of Minot Milestone Two. That's what's shown on the screen. The areas of benefit here are primarily downtown through Eastwood Park and other areas of Minot located on the south side of the river. Once that milestone is completed, we pull out another fifteen percent of Valley residents and then turn our attention to Minot Milestone Three, which is eastern side of Minot. Ultimately, the floodplain will look similar to what is shown on the screen here when the project is all done. I want to talk just a little bit about the federal piece of this. Total estimated project cost for the Maple Divergent phase is estimated to be ninety-five million dollars. I mentioned that we did secure federal funding, about sixty-one and a half million. That was awarded in January of 2022. But our work with the Corps of Engineers on this started in about 2016. So we've been at this for nearly eight years with them. In 2020, the project was authorized by Congress. And the picture on the bottom part of the slide here is Lieutenant General Todd Semenite, the general, commanding general of the Army Corps of Engineers, and also Senator Hoven. So those two worked together to get the project authorized. And then ultimately, Senator Hoven delivered the funding through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act in 2022. The remaining pieces of this, so the federal funding constitutes about sixty-five percent of this phase of the project. The remaining pieces would be state and local. So that non-federal share is split sixty-five thirty-five, with the state share being about twenty-two million of that ninety-five million dollar total. And then our local share would end up being about twelve million dollars. The federal piece of this is indexed to inflation, okay? So even though the amount that was awarded was sixty-one and a half million, that number will likely go up significantly to account for the inflationary pressures that we've all seen. We've alluded to it in the past here. We've been working with several entities, primarily railroads, over the last two to three years on concerns that they have. And we've been able to navigate through a process and identify a plan that we think can move forward. But that process has created obviously delay, right? So we're not yet fully designed on this. And those delays are concerning to our federal funding partners. I want to make it clear, though, that should the council, you know, want to sit on this or think about it or have questions or move the table this, I'm not here to state that the funding is in jeopardy of being lost. I don't want that to be the take-home message here at all. But just want to throw it out there, that is a pressure that is on us to move this project forward. Funding for acquisitions is currently available. We do get seventy-six point one million dollars from the state. In the current BANM, we anticipate getting that same level in the next BANM. That's subject to legislative approval, of course. But that is the amount that's identified in legislative intent. So it essentially sets a priority ranking for us moving forward here. So with that, President Janser, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Benz, and he's going to get into the particulars.
Thank you, President Janser, members of the council. I'll carry a little bit through, really, how did we get to the design that's in front of you today? And we'll show some information on the alternatives. We certainly won't bring you through them all. And I think by the time you see the presentation, you'll be glad we didn't bring you through them all. But just a little background, as Mr. Ackerman was saying, the Maple Divergent piece, really just to the west of Broadway, kind of from the Moose Lodge up to Broadway through that stretch. So just a picture of what that area looked like in 2011, just to remind folks of what it is we're trying to deal with there. Another just aerial photo, you can see the city library there directly to the north of the city library where the homes sat there in 2011. That's the corridor that's been opened up and made available for the Maple Divergent. And that's still the alignment we plan to use. So how did we come to this plan? The preliminary engineer's report that was done back following the 2011 flood, published early 2012, really was geared at trying to give kind of the initial look at what we thought the project would look like throughout the entire city, including all phases as well as the Maple Divergent. For the most part, I'd say it's held very true. However, in each of the different reaches that we've designed since then, there have been some variations to the plans. You know, for example, east of Broadway, I think the original plan was that the road would go on the wet side of the flood wall. We rearranged things there, built the flood wall on the south side, moved the road to the north. So there's been some adjustments throughout. We, you know, expected the same thing to happen within the Maple Divergent reach, but ultimately it's changed more than expected. So again, just the second bit image here is just from that same preliminary engineer's report in 2012 showing the diversion channel Sixth Street running through it. And I'll talk a little bit about those changes as we move forward. As Ryan mentioned, you know, we really started detailed design, I would say we started detailed design in 2018. A lot of that detailed design really was coordination with the three railroad entities that are there, along with really some extensive hydraulics. What that's turned into is some adjustment to the alignment largely in order to deal with operational constraints that the railroads had. So from 2018, the first thing we did, and each of the images that are showing up here are actually different plans, A through J. So we really focused early on on looking at what do we need to do from a railroad standpoint in order to allow the CP line to cross over the diversion? So those alignments varied widely from moving the crossing or the diamond of the two railroads further to the northeast, moving the Amtracks, or realigning the railroad by the Amtrak, all the way maybe down to ultimately what we chose as option E, which was to build to build the new bridge over the diversion channel on the existing alignment, which you may think, well, that's, seems like that makes a lot of sense to do that. The challenge is, is when you're dealing with a railroad like this, detouring traffics, obviously a lot more difficult. So we have to build a, we have to build a temporary bypass, or in the railroad terms, they call it a shoe fly around that, around that new bridge construction location. That's a lot of what's ultimately resulting in us having to push our channel off to the northwest some. So we first settled in on option E. At that point, we felt like we had met the two needs of the railroad entities. From there, we started looking at different options and how the bridge could be constructed itself on the CP line, different elevations, different bridge configurations through that area. Ultimately settled in on what we called Option E two point one, trying to keep track of the options. So became a curved bridge on the existing alignment with a shoe fly to the south. So we looked at different ways to kind of bypass the existing CPKC line in order to allow the bridge to be constructed. This seemed to be the least impactful. Once we had the railroad alignments set from there, really the next step, I think, for the most part focused on, okay, well, now how do we fit the flood control measures adjacent to it? So in that process, things that were looked at were using, how much levy do we use? Where do we implement flood wall? How do we deal with other traffic corridors that go through there? For example, Second Avenue, how does that fit through the process? What do we do at Sixth Street? In what configuration does Sixth Street go through? Does it stay open during smaller events? Is it closed immediately when the diversion's operating? So many different configurations there. Ultimately, we settled in on what we called E point two point one point A. That option preserves Second Avenue, preserves Sixth Street, utilized a fair amount of levy or tried to maximize levy from a cost standpoint. So from there, really the next step at that point was to look at another level of refinement. Most of this kind of fourth tier of refinement, I would say, had a lot to do with Sixth Street and Second Avenue, different configurations there. We looked at things like roundabout configurations there. We looked at different maintenance access approaches for the land that will be east of Broadway and north of the railroad there where the GOB sits currently. So as you can imagine, the access to the GOB gets cut off. So we had to figure out a new way to get back into that area. At the end of the day there, and that's where the numbering comes from here, is we ended up with what we're calling the recommended alignment. That's the alignment that we're hoping council takes action on. A little bit of details of that alignment, kind of built on it as we went along. But the CP bridge would be built on the existing railroad alignment. The rail would be shoe-flied or diverted to the south during construction to allow that bridge to be put in place. In order for that to happen, there are requirements within the Railroad Design Guidance that require certain setbacks from the edge of the existing bridge to where you can start a curve on the railroad. We were able to minimize those through working with CPKC on modifying the existing Sixth Street Bridge. So they'll actually look to change that bridge from what it is today, where you basically have the railroad tracks running on top of a wood structure, to they'll change it out to what they call a ballast deck bridge. So it'll basically be a tub that has ballast in it. So you essentially have a rail ballast and a rail cross-section running across the bridge. That allows us to do some curvature of the track sooner. Why do you care about that? Is that if we can curve the track sooner through that, that helped us pull the northwest levy to the south and east and try to minimize the additional property impacts. So that's part of the plan. Other things that are part of the plan is, like I said, levy on the north side, Second Avenue pushed through to an intersection with Sixth Street. And then we moved the maintenance access that would serve the area to the east of Broadway. And that will actually come off of Fifth Street instead of coming off of Sixth Street. It saves some more room east of Sixth Street to, again, preserve or try to minimize acquisitions, so. Just a little bit of a zoomed-in view of that as well as the area of property impacts. So as Ryan alluded to, and Jason, the primary impacts here are two additional properties on the west side of Sixth Street. So you can see them there crosshatched, or they have a hatch on them going in one direction. The property, sort of the middle of the slide there, just south of A Street, there's one property there that's got a crosshatch on it. That's currently owned by the city of Minot. So we do talk about eleven properties. If you were to count them up, you would see three to the north, two kind of north-south, so two, four, five, plus three is eight. But there's one of the properties located at the intersection of Second Avenue and First Avenue is actually a four-unit condo there. So that's how we get to the eleven, so. So as Ryan alluded to, path forward, we did have a public impact meeting, or a public meeting with the impacted property owners on August 22nd. I would say we had about fifty percent attendance at that meeting. Subsequent to that, we did follow up with the property owners that weren't there. I believe we were actually able to make contact with all but one of the property owners to essentially inform them on how did we get to the point that we're at, that the Joint Board's making this recommendation, sort of what led to the changes. And then we also did have staff from the city there, as well as CDM Smith, just to provide some information on what would the buyout process look like or the acquisition process if the council chooses to go forward. So that happened on the 22nd. Obviously, tonight, if you were to adopt the alignment, and what we told them is if you were to adopt the alignment, then at that point, the city would take the lead on the acquisition front in working with the property owners individually, really all with the hope that we could finish up design through the rest of '24 into '25 and get to construction of at least some portions of the project in '26. Believe that is the last slide we have, and certainly we'd stand for any questions.
Does the council have any questions for?
All right, can you, could you go back a couple of slides to the close-in view, that one right there? Yep. So the one question I've got, I mean, the Second Avenue and Sixth Street interchange in the current configuration has been messed up ever since I've lived in Minot. So you can't turn left from Second onto Sixth. It's messed up. My question actually is, I realize how we got to this one, and maybe this is the best configuration. I'm not necessarily advocating for what I'm about to ask, but I just want to make sure I understand it. If we didn't put Second Avenue all the way over to connecting to Sixth, and we let that traffic all go through, whether it's Central or wherever it is, and we just, I assume this is a dyke, right? There's no wall here. If we just built the dyke, do we, how much does that reduce the land purchase needs here? Is it, does that help us much?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Alderman Blessam, I'll just, I'll cover a little bit. In the alternatives that we went through, looking at the different flood protection alignment, that was one of the alternatives, was to do flood wall through there, not do any of Second Avenue push-through. I'm going from memory now, but I believe we were down to three, maybe four property acquisitions when we did that. So they didn't fully go away. I'd say the alternative that we looked at maybe in a little more detail was we looked at an alternative where we would switch the levy to flood wall, still have Second Avenue go through. At that point, we could save three or four homes at that point. But when we started weighing the difference of cost, including the acquisition cost versus the additional cost of doing flood wall, that was two years ago, and we thought it was about a million dollars more expensive to build the flood wall through that area. I would say with the recent prices that we're seeing on concrete and flood wall in projects like MI Seven, I would suspect that's going to be closer to two to three million dollars additional. So there is an added expense, but could it happen? It could.
So just continue. And so I get that, and you know, but I also want to highlight what Ryan talked about. There's a social impact here as well. And so I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that. And if there are options that preserve these homes or preserve, you know, the properties that people have there, that we keep those on the table. And I guess we'll find out for sure here where you guys want us to get to. If you want our approval to move forward, then I guess we've got to get there tonight. But I just want to make sure that we're understanding that, because that's the one thing that came to my mind right away. I actually love the idea of Second working correctly. It's kind of a nice thing. You could take a left off Second onto Sixth, that would be a good thing. But at the same time, man, I don't like these acquisitions, especially for people that rebuild.
Maybe if I could just add one, if I can comment to that, is I would say, you know, in looking at Second Avenue going away, we did review that. We did talk with city engineering and traffic. There certainly becomes some concerns about if Second Avenue doesn't go through there, where does that traffic go to? And, you know, who do we impact socially if traffic turns at Tenth Street and starts going up to Central Avenue? You know, as you can see on the, if you look at the image, you know, the difference in width at Tenth Street versus what's there on Second Avenue today. You know, one's designed to be an arterial roadway and the other one's not. So we do have some traffic concerns when that happens, but with that said, I certainly understand your concern.
And if I can continue, Mark?
Continue.
Yeah, and I agree completely. Now, the interesting thing is that's for all westbound traffic, because eastbound's goofed up no matter what you do. I drive this twice a day. So you're either going north up to Central or you're going up somewhere to get over to Sixth. That's the way it is, because you cannot turn left from Second onto Sixth. So, you know, I agree with you that the westbound traffic would be impacted. Absent all the purchases of the property and displacing people and all of that, I love this configuration, because you can go both directions. I think that's the right way to go. Thanks.
Rob?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this question is for you or if it's more for Ryan or Jason. So in eleven of twenty-three, we estimated that it would cost about one point five million to buy out the six to nine homes we were looking at then, and a relocation cost of about three million, so about four and a half million dollars. What's the difference in price to buy the eleven homes now and move them out? I mean, do we have another estimate?
President Janser, Alderman Fuller, the honest answer is no.
Okay. No idea at this point?
Figures at this point.
Then on top of that, like, I was reading one of the letters from one of the homeowners that's going to be impacted. And it said, you know, basically, we're going to start buying these properties in early March of 2025. When are we expecting them to move and find new places to live and everything like that? I mean, how much time are we giving people if this is what we're going to do?
Mr. President Janser and Alderman Fuller, Jerry alluded to it, that our anticipated construction start early, construction start would be in 2026.
Okay, so they'd have?
We would be a year and a half to two years out.
Okay. And then, I don't know, one other question. When we're buying out these properties, what type of value are we using? Are we using the city's assessed value or what they could actually turn around and sell? When we're buying out these properties, what type of value are we using? Are we using the city's assessed value or what they could actually turn around and sell the home for?
President Janser, Alderman Fuller, the the way that the the process works, and this is administered by the by the city of Minot through their consultant, CDM Smith, is that there is in a fair market appraisal done of the property. And then an independent appraiser reviews that initial appraisal. And those two have to come to terms and agree on what the price is. And then that represents the minimum offer from the city to that landowner.
Okay.
Or property owner. So it's not, it's not based on tax assessed value. It's based on appraisal.
Resale value, basically. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Stay stay by. We might need you, but so again, this is a public hearing. Any who wish to speak on this topic? And what's been presented? Sir, come to the podium. If we get your name and.
My name is Dean Schneider. And I live at 701 West Central Avenue, so I'm the one that's right across the street from Old Lincoln School. So have you guys even done a study on how much traffic is on Second? It was the last time that was done.
President Janser, so a lot of the traffic information, we run that through the engineering department and Stefan, so I guess I would, I know that they do traffic counts around town, so I wouldn't have that specifically unless Stefan does.
Counsel, Second Avenue Southwest, just west of Sixth Street. In the fall of 2023, so about a year ago, it had roughly 2,500 vehicles on that roadway.
Okay.
Mark, one one quick question. Stefan, one quick question for you. Is that? Do you have that? Is that directional? Because again, that or is that is that both? Is that?
That's both directions, so.
Okay.
Every car that's crossing that road, whether it's going east or west, is coming there.
Sir, please continue.
And then, when, for instance, we just bought our house, we're not even been in there basically a year. So if you're going to take the house from us, I'm going to be upside down. Because you're not going to give me what I paid for it. And I can't be going in debt just because you guys want to add Second Street and I I don't know, there's more traffic on Sixth than Central than I see on Second. I live there. My wife's outside all the time with the dogs. There's, you know, there's only time when there's a lot of traffic is di- dinner time. Everyone gets off work. But then again, there's a lot of traffic, like you're saying, is coming up Seventh, coming up Eighth, down Central to go the other way. So if we dead end it, what does that save those three houses? On Central? That's, I just want you guys to think about some of that stuff. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on the topic, please come forward. Sir? No? Okay. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the alignment that has been proposed to us.
Move to approve the alignments or second? Alderman Olson, would that include closing the public hearing?
Oh, yes, it would. Yes.
Is there a second to a motion?
All second for discussion.
Okay, second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion. Alderman Olson.
Yeah, thank you. And and I did move to approve it so that we could have the discussion. And there aren't easy answers here. There haven't been easy answers since 2011. And each time that we need to take a property, it's difficult. It's a difficult decision for us to make. It's obviously very, very difficult for the property owner. But we also need to take faith in the work that our engineers have done. And we know that this project has to be completed. And based on the information and all of the time that has been put in by the engineers, it does look like this is probably the best plan. So as we've done with hundreds of properties in the past, I would assume that there will be a lot of close communication with the property owners and that they will be certainly given the amount that their property is worth. We shouldn't be making people upside down in their loans, and I don't think that that has happened in the past. I think that there's been a lot of good communication that has occurred so that people can be made whole.
Further discussion.
Mark? Thank you, Mr. President. And I agree with you, Lisa. I mean, there's hard decisions that got to be made and they need to get what their properties are worth. But I mean, there's other things here, too. Look at somebody who's had their house down there and may have a 2% or a 3% mortgage. And now all of a sudden, they got to go buy a house and have a 7% or 8% mortgage. I mean, this 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 whole thing where the goalpost keeps changing on the flood control, and this is what I was saying at the last meeting, continuously, continuously, and I understand things happen and things change. But we are sitting here on on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis going, hey, this is the plan. Oh, no, now we're going to move the plan over here and we got to do this. And it continues to cost the city and the taxpayers more money every time we sit back and we look at this. And I mean, we all realize that flood control has to happen. But man, I I'm I'm going to tell you, I'm on the side of the homeowners here. I I think this is ridiculous that all of a sudden now we're we're going to have people be displaced from their homes because we had to change the plan again to appease the railroad, which I'm not going to lie, I'm really tired of appeasing the railroads. But I I mean, we got to, at some point, we have to say enough is enough and we're going to stick with the plan or we're not going to do it. I mean, honestly, because every time we turn around, something's changing. It's costing more money. It's costing the taxpayers and it's costing us as a city, so.
Early discussion.
Mark, just sorry, just real quick.
Alderman Blessing.
Yeah, I I'm I'm having a real hard time with it, too. You know, I when I when I look at the map and I and I see that, I, you know, especially, like I said, knowing that I drive that area and know the traffic and the patterns that go through there and in and out of there, it does make me wonder if there's a if there's a configuration that preserves those homes and still is within reason. I mean, you know, if you, let's say we were able to get it, so we only need to take three of them. I think that's maybe the general idea here. We got to take eight, you know, if they average 250,000, you're looking at what, $2 million? In that part of it alone, in savings, you know, we're saving the the acquisition costs in that case. And I realize the acquisitions are reimbursed and all the different things that go with that. You know, we're talking about numbers that most homeowners in Minot can't even fathom that are being thrown around related to flood control. We just saw 61 million. That's the federal portion that's expected due to nothing but go up. And so, you know, I I guess I don't I don't have the right answer. I don't I don't want it to be construed that I don't trust our engineering partners because they're working hard on this stuff. There's, you look at all the configurations that went into this and all the different ways that go into it. But I do feel that it is our role to balance all of that, all of the dollars with the public and and social part of this that comes into that. And so for me, I I think with 11 acquisitions on there, I'll be a no. You know, I the the council's going to do what it's going to do, but that's my take on it is that that's a step a little too far for me.
Alderman Pittner. Thank you, President Janser. Question for whoever wants to take it from the engineers or public works or utilities director. Tabling this, is there another options? Can we get a a list of three options that you guys have looked at to move forward? Two options so that the council can weigh those things rather than us based in conjecture, you know, let's do three. That's that's acceptable or 11?
President Janser, Alderman Pittner, I I think if you're desiring more information and a deeper look at the 40 alternatives that Jerry flipped up on the screen, we're more than happy to give those to you. And and like I alluded to in kind of my opening or my my comments about the federal funding, I I timeline is not that critical right now where we can take time and be deliberate about a decision here and make sure that the council is fully briefed on all the alternatives, the options, the benefits, the drawbacks associated with them so you can make a more fully informed decision. I think that's completely reasonable.
Let me continue. I guess I would make a motion to table this for one month. If you feel that is an acceptable timeline to provide more information to the council and we can we can fully vet this out. This this might be the end all be all of the direction we go. But if 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 fellow council members feel like we need more information and to do more due diligence to look at this and 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 weigh options, I'm 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 okay with that. So I'll make a motion to table for one month.
Okay, is a motion to table?
Alderman Janser, is is for the city attorney, is is the is the motion to table in order right now?
It it's limited only to, so the discussion can only be limited to the motion to table. So it's it's in order right now. But the motion would remain on the table that Alderwoman Olson has made. Does that make sense?
So so the motion to table is in order at this moment?
The motion to table would be in order, but the it would be to table Alderwoman Olson's motion until the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, well, excuse me, one month.
For for one month.
For the, so the first October meeting? Okay, I'll I'll second that motion. I don't know if we need it.
Public Works Director.
President Janser, members of council, just, I guess, before we get to the point of voting and tabling, just to give you a little more information before you leave, I think maybe Chris Plank has a couple of things to offer. There's been mention of, you know, people upside down on mortgages, interest rates, things of that nature. So we're obligated by the Uniform Relocation Act to address a lot of those things. So Chris can talk to some of the some of the benefits and and offers that we make to homeowners.
President Janser, members of council, yes, there is a formula and a worksheet that does take into consideration the different interest rates. So the resident, when we work with them, we get their current financial information on their house, how many months they have left, what's their current mortgage rate and their current monthly payment. And then, once, excuse me, once we help them find a new location and they secure a new loan, we would enter the new interest rate as well as the new mortgage rate into the calculator, hit a button, and then it would tell us how much. So the goal is to get them as even as they are right now with the difference in the interest rates that that happened.
Alderman Fuller.
Real quick, real quick, Chris. So basically, what we're going to do is what the city does is we help buy down the rate at at the end of this. So
Correct.
So if somebody has a 2% mortgage and we're buying it down from 8% to 2%, it's going to cost us?
It it could, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there further discussion?
If I could just ask for clarification on the motion to table for a month, does that mean that we want to schedule a meeting a month from now to talk about this? Or are we tabling this to put on a regular meeting a month from now and somewhere in between, we schedule a special meeting to talk about this specifically? Because in my opinion, this is going to take, I mean, if you want to go through all the options, it needs to be a meeting dedicated only to that. It's going to take a lot of time, answer a lot of questions, so I'd recommend a special council meeting. So I'm asking clarification. Is this being tabled to a regular council meeting in a month? Or are we requesting a special council meeting in a month to talk through all these?
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, President Janser. I I guess I'll look to the engineers. Do you feel that we need to have a presentation on every option? Is this something that we can get a packet and and look through the options? Is there enough discernible information within those that we can we can see the different alignments that we came through and then come with questions based off of those? I'm not an engineer. I don't want to do your job, but I.
I'll I'll take the question. President Janser, Alderman Pittner, so in the options that we did go through, they they are real. So I think what you're most interested in is you're probably whoops, I'm going to back up one more slide. I think you're most interested in, after we got the railroad stuff set, what did we look at for alternative flood control alignments? So that would be things like Second Avenue, no Second Avenue. It would be flood wall versus levy. Would be changes to Sixth Street. So I I believe we have that information to show you the different alternatives. We can certainly would be able to answer questions on if we do this, what does it do to the number of acquisitions? I I won't say that we are able to compare costs on all of them because we didn't compare costs on all of them. But I think to give you an understanding just of if Second Avenue goes away, what does that mean for acquisitions? Because it it isn't quite as simple as, I'll flip back to the last one. It's it's not quite as simple as if Second Avenue goes away where you see Second Avenue, anybody that's underneath, that's just safe, right? Because we do have to deal with, we still have to deal with traffic on the dead end streets, call this acts, those types of things. So it's not quite that clear, cut and dry. However, I think we have those alternatives to show you at any time, so.
And if I could just make a comment quick, I I think the main thing that I'm looking for is, I I think what you mentioned before, we've got an option that's going to take 11 properties. If there is one that's got three and 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 you felt that it was workable, I think we'd want to understand that. But then there's the other social side that says, if all that traffic now goes to Central, what does that do to that roadway? The split roadway there, it's a lot of different things, right? So that's the main thing I'm looking for is if if the 11 is on this end and the three is on this end, what do those look like? That's that's what I'm looking for at least.
President Janser, Alderman Blessing, I would I would say that we have that information. Some of that, you're comparing an apple to an orange, so they aren't exactly one to one. But I I think we can we can at least talk through if we do that, what happens in the in the other scenario. I think we have that information.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. And answer a question from Jerry. You said that you met with almost all of the property owners. What were the major concerns? Were there any who were like, yes, we understand that this is the the right thing to do? Or did all have concerns?
President Janser, Alderwoman Olson, I would say all of them had concerns. All of them were shocked by the additional acquisitions. I would say that was a common theme. We certainly heard a lot, if I'm just kind of, I'm maybe speaking for them, but I'd say we heard a lot of concerns about things like mortgage costs. You know, how do I get into a house of of similar quality? So we heard the the acquisition questions. We heard from at least one property owner that was very concerned. He has income properties there. So he's very concerned about what the appraisal process would be for income properties. And then and then I'd say also, out of fairness, we also heard from some property owners that said, if this is what you're going to do, tell us now, don't drag us along because we want to move on with our lives and start, you know, looking for replacement property. So there was some all over the board, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the the motion on the floor is to table this discussion. And I I guess we need to.
And I think the city manager asked to point a clarification as to how far you wanted to table it. And if I remember right, the discussion was the first meeting in October?
And to that point, can can I amend my motion to the second meeting in October? Because I understand that'll be our second budget hearing. That might be a lengthy meeting. Maybe we can fit it within the confines of that agenda or do a special meeting prior to that. Do a special meeting prior to that 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 regular scheduled meeting and have that information be fresh going into into that meeting.
So that can be amenable to that? Is there any objection from any of the aldermen to that adjustment? Okay, then.
If I may continue, then I would leave that up to staff. And if staff wants to work with engineer and if if Jason wants to work with engineers and feel like they can fit that within that meeting, I would leave that up to the department heads and the city manager. Or if one needs to be scheduled, we can we can find a time prior to that meeting to schedule it.
Mark, Mr. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. For me, just personally, I think, and it doesn't have to be long, but if we could have a separate meeting so we could just focus on what the alternatives are and what the different variations that they come up with are, so then we could have that information going into the October meeting, that would help me tremendously.
City manager.
Sir President, if my recommendation is is that we put this on the second regular council meeting in October as was motion, but before that, staff will work with the engineering company to 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 schedule a special council meeting to go over all the alternatives. So that way, hopefully, you're informed that you could potentially take action at that second meeting in October.
Fair enough. Let's vote on the motion to, oh, city attorney.
And just to clarify, so then the the motion that Alderwoman Olson made tonight is what would be the motion that would be on the agenda for the October 21st meeting?
You would remove that from the table at that meeting?
Yes, that would be the that would be what would be taken off the table at the October 21st meeting, just so everybody is aware of expectations of what. Yes, that would be the, that would be what would be taken off the table at the October 21st meeting, just so everybody is aware of expectations of what's going to happen on the 21st.
Okay, we all clear? Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessom?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson, motion passes.
That brings us to item six point two, uh, the CDM Smith Contract Amendment Number Nine Flood Control Property Acquisitions. Uh, what are the wishes of the council? Alderman Pittner.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate to table this in conjunction with the previous item? Is, are these?
Public Works Director.
Uh, President Janser, Alderman Pittner, so I was, I was just thinking that, um, to myself while I'm sitting there. So these 11 could be tabled. I'm fine with that. Um, there are two additional properties that, um, we've added due to some work that we began on MI eight. Which is the Burdick, Burdick Bridge Replacement Project. So it'd be the, uh, the two properties, the old Alan Kurth building, and then there's a, a piece of property off to that. So it'd be two acquisitions and it's about six, six parcels. We'd like to, that, the one parcel was listed for sale. We contacted him. Um, he's agreed to take it out to markets and let us, uh, go through an appraisal process. So I would like to continue to work on that, but I'm certainly at the, uh, both councils, so.
Uh, what are your wishes, council members?
Mark, I would move, I would move that we approve six point two as presented, uh, just so we can get into the discussion.
Second.
We're Pittner, discussion.
Okay, so, so just to, just to clarify then, um, if we do the authorization as is, it, it sets us up. So if we move forward with MI four as presented in October, we're ready to just roll with it. We don't need an additional action. Um, and, and, I mean, my assumption would be you, you would have no reason to move forward on that until we have that discussion for that side and have that decision.
President Janser, Alderman Blessom, correct, yeah. With knowing that you guys haven't decided the 11 or three or six properties, we would. Hold off on those and just continue on with the, with the others that we've added in there.
And, and regardless of whether we go forward, if we do go forward with a, a, a map that has three on it, 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 there's still work there. So that authorization would allow for that work. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessom?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, item six point three, Visit Minot Services Agreement. Um, I believe Ms., uh, Stephanie, uh, Shane Rock is here. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Janser and members of council. Uh, thank you for giving me the chance to chat tonight. I believe in your packet you have a. Visit Minot Services Agreement, uh, that is being proposed. I was hoping to take just a few minutes tonight to provide a update for how the tourism industry is performing. Um, and to kind of for the mem- for the members who are new to council, uh, to provide just a little bit of background. Uh, I, we always like to look forward, but in the process of looking forward, I do think it's important to, uh, learn from the things in the past of what we'd like to do different. And of course, the things that went right, we like to repeat those. So the Tourism Recovery and Resiliency Project was implemented in January of 2021. That was a three-year project. And it was an agreement between Visit Minot and the City of Minot. And the purpose of that was a few things. One, of course, uh, re- trying to rebound from COVID. But in addition to that, it was also to help get a sports tourism program on its feet. So we proposed, it was a $470,000 contract and Visit Minot guaranteed a $10 million economic impact in return of that. That expired in December, uh, 31st of 2023, so just nine months ago, I guess now. Uh, we, as, as a recap, we underspent by $94,967.85. And that's what is being proposed for our 2024 contract or services agreement. And we had an economic impact, um, of over, of over $13 million. So when we ask ourselves, you know, why is this being proposed in the first place? How are we, how are we at this discussion? Why are we here? Again, you know, looking back over the past 15 years, Visit Minot has had, um, a lot of, I guess I'll use the word inconsistent funding. I mean, our funding sources were the same, but between flood and the oil boom and then a little bit of a bust and a lot of hotel rooms being built. Um, there essentially was some inconsistent funding. And, you know, earlier today I was in a, a conversation with a large event that's looking at 2028. Two weeks ago, we were in a conversation with, uh, an event that would actually go through 2031. And so what we found, the Visit Minot Board has, and staff have. Put an emphasis on, uh, diversifying our funding a little bit, just so that, not by a lot, but by a little bit. Because that in turn can really impact the results. And so tonight, what I'm going to do quickly is going through four different data sets. Um, you know, I can tell you all day long about all of the, the tourism that's happening. The truth is before I started working in the visitor center every single day. And these guys were my clients. So I've been in tourism for 20 years in Minot. I had no idea how many people came, um, into Minot every single day. I don't know if this works, but I'm going to try. Nope, yep, it does. Okay, so this is the first data set. You see here that in the past four months in the visitor center, this is the least technical of all the data. In the past four months in the visitor center, and we're open in the summer, six days a week. We have seen visitors from all, and these are people who have signed the guestbook in our visitor center, 50 states, 23 countries and five provinces. If we're being really honest, I can say, I would say, uh, we're, before working here, I'd say, where are these people? I go to the grocery, I go to work. I don't, I don't know that these are tourists, right? I say this because this and the additional data coming ahead is the reason why we're here. Because it's like, you know what? We already know, and we'll look at credit card spend here in a second, that 28%. Up to 30, depends on the time, time of the year of credit card spend comes from people from outside of Ward County. That means people, that's sales tax, right? And so that's the reason why we like to talk about tourism and how, and how that can impact everybody who lives here every single day. The next data set, and this is, the first one was from Visit Minot, right? The next, the rest of the data that you're going to see is from three different companies, not from Visit Minot. This shows the occupancy, and this is the chart I just received last week. It's from, uh, it's called a STAR report, Smith Travel Report. You can see here that thi- this shows the occupancy from June 8th to through the end of August. You can see we had a good June. The blue line is, uh, this year, the yellow line is last year. This is the thing that I want to point out. You know, you look at June 15th, we had a softball tournament. Uh, the next two weekends were Magic City Youth Baseball, uh, youth tournaments that were new. Um, the reason, the softball tournament happens almost every year, but this year we had 24. And I say we, I, Visit Minot is not claiming any of that, those accolades. That a hundred percent goes to, um, Thor and his, and his group. The same with Magic City Youth Baseball. Visit Minot is not claiming the, the, we're not waving the flag saying, hey, look at everything Visit Minot's doing. We are supporting those groups to help do what they do. So when you look at, when you look at that difference. Um, it's like, yeah, we, we, we see that we, we attribute it a lot to sports tourism, but I want to clarify that a little bit as well and say. No, a lot of the times you see a little bump here and there. It is not a hundred percent due to sports tourism. It is due to a lot of different factors. When you see July 13th, you see we're a little bit low from last year. That's because last year there was a big baseball tournament here, state, or nope, a state softball tournament. Um, and then of course, the next weekend was the first weekend of the fair and the second weekend of the fair. Other than that, we're kind of, we're kind of flat. This is just the last one I saw that we got from STAR, which is why you see that here. This is another little piece that we like to look at and it's, you know, I, I think it's important to look at the things that go good. And I think it's also important to recognize the things that maybe aren't as ideal. This thing moves. Um, that aren't as ideal. So here we see visitor days and I'm comparing it to trips. This tells a story. This tells a really big story and something that we're working on a lot. When you look at this, again, the first chart on the left is visitor days. So the number of days that people from outside, so from 50 miles away are in our community. It's, uh, we're a little up. Most months are a little up, some are a little down, most are about flat. For the course of the year, we're essentially flat. I only have data through June. That's why we're showing that. But when you look at the number of trips, this tells a different story. What this tells you is that, you know, consumer behavior has shifted a little bit. And what we're seeing is there are more humans coming. They're just not staying as long. We use that data to help our marketing. The next one, and this is also from Data, Dataphi, the one I showed you before is from Dataphi. This, this data is also from Dataphi. Now this is another, this shows again, credit card spend. So this data only counts people who live more than 50 miles away and it does not include Canadians. I want to, you know, you look at this and if you're, if you're not careful, it can look like there's a, a really big gap there. And a- again, in full transparency, we'll have new data in three weeks that gives this, this is based off of a percentage difference relative to the 2023 average. So I'm careful to say that it's misleading because it's accurate. It's not misleading. It's just important to understand what you're actually looking at. So point is, the amount of people coming in from outside of Ward County into Minot. For leisure reasons, for conferences, for sports tourism, there are more, more humans coming into Minot and spending more money here. That's the purpose of this. And when I get that new chart, I will make sure to get it back out to all of you. The last thing, and I'm going to go back to this just one more, one more minute. The other point I want to point out about credit card spending, I mean, we already talked about it's, the whole point is to get more humans to town, right? But why? It's when they are in town, they're supporting local businesses, restaurants, hotels, retail. We believe that's where the true growth comes from, right? It, it doesn't come from handouts. It comes from, let's get more humans here. Let's do what we can to get more humans here to spend their money. So that the people and the businesses of Minot can use it to cost everybody here hopefully less money. This is, this is the last set of data. This is from Tourism Economics. The North Dakota Department of Commerce pays for this data. Visit Minot does not pay for this data. I just received that, this, um, part of this report I received three weeks ago. The other part I just received this afternoon. So this, these guys, this tourist, Tourism Economics, full transparency, I just learned about these guys not very, uh. In the past few months is when I really started learning a whole lot more about them. Because I now understand that the, um, our industry relies heavily on this. This shows you all the counties, but it's pretty tiny. It is in your packet. We've pulled out the most, I would say the most important data. This shows the top four performing counties. Ward County, and this counts, this, um, who this counts is again, people living more than 50 miles outside of Minot. Who have spent an over three hours in our community. It shows that there is a 320 mil- and this is 2023, there's no data for 2024 yet. And again, this Department of Commerce just got this in the past month. Ward County has a, a $320 million visitor spending. The growth since 2019 is up. A few percentage points. We don't, it's, it's up a lot more compared to 2020 and 2021 and 2022, but we don't compare it to that because it's not, this is much more realistic. The, the point that I really want to point out is where it looks at taxes saved per household in 2023. Now this is what that attributes to. It's they, how they figure that is they say, okay, based off of the total amount of spend of people from outside of Ward County. If that, if that didn't exist, if those people were not here spending that money. In order for the community of Minot, the City of Minot to provide the same services, what, how much more would it cost per household? And that number is $962 per household. I present this information to, to you today because, you know, I've worked in tourism for about 20 years, so I'm a big fan of it. I, it's only been recently that I truly understand the impact that this makes to our community, the true economic impact of it. And so that's why I wanted to present, um, that data tonight. You know, um, historically CVBs have counted heads in beds and we still count heads in beds. That's how we're primarily funded. So of course we're going to count heads in beds. But the other thing we like to look at is feet in the street. Because feet in the street impact, those are the things that we were talking about. We are Convention Visitors Bureau. That is a name that has been around since, I think, 93 or 1992, when the first time we had our contract. But, you know, when you look at how CVBs are operating, modern CVBs are operating today, they look at the word DMO. It's a destination marketing organization and that's how we view ourselves and our role on a daily basis. It is very simply to get more humans into Minot from outside of Ward County every day. We have fancy mission statements and all that kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, I think it's important to just look really at what is our purpose? And it's to get more people here to spend their money every single day. As I mentioned, the last point I'll mention on this point is that, you know, the, the adjustments to a diversifying funding. When the board made that prior, made it that a priority a couple of years ago. Um, we've seen some good results. We do have more work to do. So that's why we are looking at proposing what you have in front of you for night for 2024.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, is there a motion from the council at this point after the presentation?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve discussion. City Attorney.
Alderman Janser, um, and Ms. Shane Rock, it appears as though the Exhibit One to the Services Agreement didn't make it on the agenda. So I've emailed that to the council, um, Public Information Officer. I'm plugged into DIAS number seven. And I have a copy of that Exhibit One Deliverables, um, Exhibit Two, the Services Agreement up on my computer. These are the services that underneath this agreement, if approved, that Visit Minot will provide. My understanding is this has gone through the Visit Minot Board. They've approved it. Um, it is somewhat, it is a little more broad than what was, um, proposed when the agreement was, when the funding was initially allocated back in 2021.
Correct. Uh, President Janser and, uh, members of council, that really was for a separate pro- I mean, that was for Tourism Recovery and Resilience. That was a sports tourism project in particular. That's, it is, it does, it is a different, uh. Agreements of what, I guess, deliverables, that's the word.
City Manager.
If I may, just to help clarify for the council and for the public a little bit. So we have, we have two service agreements with Visit Minot, correct? We have one that's the original created back in 1982, which is the mechanism that the lodging taxes go through. The agreement that's in front of the council tonight goes back to 2021 when we were coming out of COVID and the hotels were struggling to. Uh, stay afloat because, uh, tourism was down, people were holding up for COVID. And so my understanding was that this 477,000 was given to Visit Minot to do some different things to help rebound from that. And so what's in front of the council tonight is an extension of that second agreement from 2021. To allow Visit Minot to use the remaining just less than $95,000 from that original 477,000. The other agreement at some point, um, staff and Visit Minot intend to do a, a relook and a revamp at that. And that will come forward to the council at a, at a future meeting. But this evening, we're just talking about an extension of that 2021 service agreement with a different scope of services, which is on the screen now.
And I, I would not, if I may, Alderman Janser, I don't know that I categorize this as an extension. Um, it's, it's a new services agreement with new deliverables and that's what's on the Exhibit One. But the funding source is going to be from that same allocation. So that 400 and some thousand that was initially allocated back in 2021. Um, there's approximately 94,000 and some change that's remaining with that. That's the dollar amount that Visit Minot would like to use to fund this services agreement. That's before the council today.
That's correct, President Janser, members of council. That's cor- that's my understanding of this is it's, I, yes, it's a, it's a kind of, it's a new agreement. Using funding that had already been allocated. Correct.
Alderman Blessom.
Okay, so I, I don't want any, Steph, don't take this as anything against what you're trying to do. This, this feels strange. So I want to make sure that we talk our way through it a little bit. So where, where's the money at right now? Where is the $95,000?
Mr. President. So the council in 2021 allocated the $477,000. It's based off of a reimbursement agreement. So when Visit Minot spends the money, they file for reimbursement. So they've been reimbursed everything except for just shy of that $95,000. So that is sitting in the city's funds currently and is available. And this agreement, those were only to be available through December 31st of 2023. And so if council approves this this evening, you would change the scope of services and make that $95,000 that's still existing in the city's accounts from that 2021 action of the council for them to, to use in accordance with the agreement.
Alderman Pittner.
Can I continue, Mark?
Continue.
No, it's fine. The, so, so Dave, would it be, is it in the, is it in the sales tax account still right now? Because it's reimbursement, so we, it would be, is it even still authorized? I guess is my question. The, the agreement ended.
Yeah, President Janser, Alderman Blessam. It is, it was originally funded by the Economic Development Sales Tax that was under the city's purview at that time, so it wasn't through the magic fund. There was some discussion prior to year end and with the, about extending the agreement and just working out the terms. So the funding was encumbered at year end, so it is still available. If the council elected not to take this action, it would just be part of the fund balance, and it would be available for another use.
So if I can continue, so just again, to get it clear for me, Dave. So is it, do we need a budget amendment in '24 to, to make the expenditure?
Uh, Mr. President, Alderman Blessam, I don't believe so at this point because it was previously appropriated and the funds were encumbered at year end. So the appropriation is still there.
All right, I think that's, that's that part.
Okay, Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, President Janser. Again, just to provide some background to this, this was actually part of the budget process last year when we were wrapping up this, this project, this TRF program that the city and the Visit Minot, um, took up. These were the unexpended, uh, dollars. And part of my president's message last year was for the city of Minot to, and city staff to work with Visit Minot to enter into a new service agreement with new scopes of service with that remaining dollars to carry out the same mission, but to broaden the scope of, of what those dollars are able to do. Whether that be through staff, whether that be through resources for, for Visit Minot to, again, just do a better job of what, a great job that I think they're already doing. So that's a little bit of background on that. That's when this conversation started was at the end of that program, I directed through my president's message and, and this, this council acted upon last budget process was to use these dollars for this agreement.
Alderman Blessam.
Okay, so again, same caveat. You got nothing but great things about what you're, you're talking about, Steph. This seems strange because we're, we're going to allocate $95,000. You gotta hurry up and go spend it in four months. I mean, I know you guys got operations and, and, I mean, like, I would like to think if we're spending $95,000 in Economic Development Sales Tax dollars, that we're going to get direct, direct response to that and get it moving. Is that what's going to happen in the next four months, or does it just fund operations?
President Janser and Alderman Blessam, thank you for that question. So, you know, in, in full transparency, this has been a discussion since last November, and then I presented in December. So, um, right, wrong, or indifferent, the truth is that I have it budgeted because we had went through getting a new attorney and this whole process of how are we proceeding? What's the best way to proceed? Do we extend? Do we do something new? And so that's taken a little bit of time. So truly, that money has been budgeted at, to be performing to do what we do in 2024. So I want to be careful how I say, the intention, the expectation, that probably isn't the right word either, was that it would be, it's been part of our plan, right? Part of our, what we're doing for the year. With that said, we budget, we, we operate conservatively. And so, um, does that mean that if we, if we didn't get the funding today, and that's certainly not what I'm requesting, would that, you know, put us in a pickle? No, because we are very fiscally responsible, and our, our job is to perform every day. So, um, that, I hope that answers your question.
And if I can continue. Could, could you talk a little bit, Steph, about how, I mean, really, over the, over time, you had $477,000 to work with through the end of 2023. How did you underspend? I mean, we don't hear that often, so I, I'd like to kind of hear it from you.
You bet. Thank you, President Janser and Alderman Blessam. Thank you for that question. So, you know, um, it was broken up into three different sections. And, you know, in full transparency, that expired nine months ago, and so you know, you move on to the next thing. But it was our, what we did for three years. So I believe I can speak to all that your questions are right now. So, um, I, we, the way we, the way I approach this, and, and the board is fully supportive of that, is, um, because could have we billed the city for the full amount? We could have. But we really do like to approach it in as conservative a manner as we possibly can. So for instance, out of the 477, there, you know, the first two years, Visit Minot did get funding for programming, which wasn't necessarily on a reimbursement basis. A portion of it, the first two years were, but in the third year, it was 100% for any event, right? And every one of those events were audited. Well, in each of those, there are different tiers. And for instance, Tier 2 could have been up to $12,000. It was like a $4,000 to $12,000 tier. We, the average, I'm going to guess was about $5,500. Because the same thing, if the goal would have been, hey, let's spend all this money, we could have absolutely went to the top of those tier, to the top of the tier and spent that money. Because it was, it was in our purview, it was in the contract. It would have been officially not wrong to do. But, you know, the way we approach this is, we believe, and we work with these events incredibly closely, we provided funding based off of what we believed they needed and what was going to give them not a handout, but a step up so that next year, they could continue what they were going to be doing. And so that's been our philosophy on this the entire time. And so at the end, truly, I was really proud to say, hey, city of Minot, for $379,000, we returned, and it's like, it's just under $14 million in economic impact. And so that, we were really proud of that. And saying, you know what? We underspent and overdelivered. We try to do that every single day. And so in the process of doing that, and last December 18th, when I was here presenting, that had been part of the conversation going, okay, this is what we did. And then it was, all right, let's, if, if this is an option, we've got, you know, $95,000 unspent. How can we continue supporting Visit Minot and what they're doing? And the question was, is can you do, you know, what can you do with this? I'm like, that is the right amount of money for us. That gets us to the, right now, I mean, in 10 years and five years, I don't know. But this year, that is the absolute right amount of money for us to be able to do exactly what we've needed to do in 2024 and beyond.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, President Janser. And again, just, Steph, if you want to touch on it, what those tiers involved. It was, it was stays in, in Minot from outside of Ward County individuals. It was, um, hotel nights, you know, in order to qualify for those tiers, to access those funds, to, to, again, take those, those events and organizations to another level. And, and it wasn't just us sitting at a table, it wasn't Visit Minot Board sitting at a table, you know, penciling numbers. Can you talk on the data, how it was collected, how it's equated?
Yes, absolutely. There were, you had to meet two out of the three bullet items. And we did look at the number of teams that were coming in from outside of Ward County. It had to be a certain percentage. 65% had to be from outside of Ward County to get level Tier 3. They had to be over 75% from outside of Ward County to hit, hit Tier 1 or 2. And Tier 1 was the, was the most money, right? To hit Tier 2, and that's where a vast majority fell in, that was between $4,000 and $12,000. So if you hit Tier 2, 75% of the people had to be from outside of Ward County. You had to have over, I think it was over 350 hotel room nights. And again, it was all based off of each tier. So it was hotel room nights, number of humans, of course, number of nights. And yeah, and how many from outside of Ward, because that's what we count.
If I may, real quick. And again, just to, to speak to this being the liaison between city council and Visit Minot, there were events that were turned away and were not invested in through this program. One of them I can think is Babe Ruth, uh, Little League World Series.
Oh, yeah.
Those are events that it just wasn't worth, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze for what, what the city would have had to pony up or hand over for those programs. It wasn't worth it. So Visit Minot was diligent and responsible and fiscally responsible with those dollars, and we didn't invest in those things. It would have been a great event to have to Minot, right? I mean, they would have been, would have been fun. But that's not what Visit Minot's in, in business of doing. So just want to speak and highlight some of those, some of those things from the program.
Alderman Olson.
No, thank you. And I think both of these questions are probably for the city attorney. I'm trying to recall back to how we voted on this a year ago. But in my mind, we approved the dollar amount. So tonight, we're approving the agreement. Is that correct?
So tonight, you're approving a services agreement, and the dollar amount that's in this services agreement is the dollar amount that was unspent by Visit Minot under the TRP program.
So then my second question would be, can we edit the agreement to have it extend until the end of 2025? Because I, I think one of the concerns is, and maybe, you know, Steph would correct me here, but I think a little bit of our concern is that maybe it can't get spent down in the next four months. So instead of locking them into that date, I would rather give them a little bit more time since we basically last year agreed that that dollar amount was acceptable to us.
And Chairman Janser, Alderman Olson, you can certainly amend the agreement to reflect that. There is a, if I can find the agreement here. Paragraph 1 does state that upon a written agreement by both parties, the agreement can be extended. So it's contemplated in the current agreement, but I could also amend it to explicitly be through December 31st, 2025, if that's, if a quorum of the council agrees.
Alderman Blessam.
Steph, do you, based, based on having this in your budget, do you already have things in '24 that are already reimbursable? Will you be able to use it as is?
President Janser and Alderman Blessam, we, this wouldn't be on a reimbursement basis. This is a set, it's not proposed that way. It would be basically $95,000 to Visit Minot, similar to some of how your other service agreements are, right? So with other organizations where it says, okay, here's the amount of funding, here's the deliverables that we're getting in return. So that's essentially what we're, the, the deliverables that you, wherever that is. The deliverables that we have proposed is what I can confidently say will be done in 2024. So the, I guess I'll say request, is that it would go through 2024. Your, the next agenda item after this is, uh, to discuss future years.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 6.4, and we're still on Visit Minot.
Thank you. And I believe you see up on your screen a proposed, this would be new, this would be a new proposed extended stay leisure fee. To provide just a little bit of background on President Janser and members of council, to provide just a little bit of background of how we got here. Currently, and this was written into Century Code in, from what I understand, the 80s, that, um, lodging tax is not, no tax is collected from people who stay over 30 days. At the time it was implemented, it was meant for people who were moving and were staying in a hotel until they could find a home, right? Then they were considered a resident. That, as you can imagine, has changed quite a bit since the 80s and, and how we operate. And so as we've discussed, and Alderman Blessam, you've, you've touched on this a little bit already tonight, that, you know, as we've looked at, how can, how can Visit Minot continue performing at a certain level? And getting a little bit of funding to ensure that we're able to do that and commit to some of these events in the next, you know, eight to 10 years out? That's where this conversation came from. That's it. Okay, in 2024, we've got this plan. In 2025, and Harold mentioned, you know, there's an agreement from '92 that we're still operating in. Theoretically, in '25, we would get rid of that agreement from '92 completely, and that this would be the one that we would move, move forward with. So in the discussions with city staff and city leadership, the conversation was, okay, what other ways, do we do a services agreement similar to what the city has with some of the other organizations? Or is there another way to secure funding? And one of the ideas that was thrown out there, since Minot is a home rule city, from what we understand from the city attorney and our attorney who worked together on this, that Minot would have the ability to instill an ordinance to collect a $1 per day leisure fee for extended stays. That extended stay would be for people who are stay over 30 days, but it would take effect essentially on day one.
Okay. Thanks for explaining the item. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second.
A second.
Lots of seconds. I think Alderman Pittner won that one. Discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So the 3% sales tax on hotel stays stays in effect, and then we're doing an extended stay or leisure fee, I think, as you guys maybe wanted to call it, at a dollar a day. And that'll just, that'll be the new ordinance. Now, after I read this, Stephanie and I had a conversation. And one of the things that concerns me is how the hotels try to subvert paying the fee, paying the tax and everything else. So if we're going to write a new ordinance with regard to this, maybe we need to look at putting some teeth to it, too. And what I mean by that is, you know, if, if a hotel tries to do anything like that, we put some fines into place. If you're caught trying to cheat the system and not pay the lodging tax or the extended stay fee, you know, and maybe that's equal to the number of days that the client was listed to stay, times the rate, times the 3% or whatever it is. But we got to have some way to go back at these guys because something else I heard was that upon the sale of a hotel or a year end, we're not getting the reports from these hotels either on what their sales tax is. And so some of them sell the property, leave and never end up paying a sales tax. Or I'm sorry, the lodging tax, I said, the sales tax. So maybe, I mean, on something like that, too, at the end of the year or on the sale of a property, we need to put something in there that says, hey, if you guys aren't going to get us your reports so we can make a determination at the end of the year, it's going to cost you $500 a day until you can get it to us. Or if you sell the property, you have 30 days to get us your finished report so we can see what lodging tax is owed to the city. Because I mean, if, if, that's what we were talking about today. I mean, they're, they're basically cheating us, aren't they? It's a harsh way to say it, but.
President Janser and members of council, the, this was a discussion, uh, May, April, when, when we were at, maybe March, when we, when I was at council last time. And there was, I mean, that, it's, it's not across the board, right? So I, I want to be really careful on that. There, and I think Dave Lakefield mentioned that, and our, the city auditor had mentioned too, that there are some hotels that, uh, there's some instances that, where that's been the case.
Alderman Blessam.
So I, I just wanted to give a little, a little perspective for me on this. I, I don't tend to like these things when we're trying to find a way to generate funds, right? That's, to me, not the right way to look at it, at least from my perspective. One of the things that I do look at with this, so is I do look at this as a whole, okay? This, this is a, to me, a strange way that this was laid out in the first place that, oh, if you stay long enough, then we just wipe it all clean and you don't have to pay anything. And that's sort of strange to me. And so I, I, I do like the idea of getting that aligned. I mean, what makes more sense to me is, is that you just always pay three I mean, what makes more sense to me is that you just always pay 3%, you know, of whatever your stay is, and then there's no gaming, there's no games playing, there's none of that stuff. That's just what it is. And so I think there's multiple ways that you could go about that, is what it comes down to. This is one proposed way, I think there are others. But again, I'll just go back to the idea that, to me, it's not about punishing the person coming in from out of town, because we certainly want them here, right? We want them to stay a long time and have a great time enjoying the city and doing things that are around here. It's not necessarily about funding what's a pseudo-government operation either. I mean, it's, to me, it's none of those. You know, there's a certain amount of this that the state allows us to do, and that's okay to fund some of those operations. So as long as we're doing that balancing, it's something I can work with and understand. I do think that, with that in mind, what I would like to see it be is something that is more straightforward, and it treats pretty much everybody the same. You know, I don't know exactly what that would look like. It is interesting to me that it's, so the way that I far understand this, right, the proposed fee would be collected beginning at day one, but the 3% is never collected from them then. So to me, that seems a little bit strange. I would almost think of it as, collect 3% through day 29 or 30 or whatever that is, and then a dollar a day after that point. I almost think of it the opposite. It looks like Dave's got something to say on that. Maybe I'm breaking the law.
Minot Director.
Mr. President, Alderman Blessam, this is the welcome to my world in lodging tax collections, but how it works in today's world, and I think the intent of the language where it limits it to stays of less than 30 days, is it's a clear delineation, it does not apply to apartments and longer-term stays. So typically, hotel motel stays, especially related to tourism, are typically shorter in duration. So those that are here for that purpose are paying the tax, which in turn promotes, or is the funds used to promote activities that attract those types of stays. Where we're running into problems is these longer stays. So to qualify as an extended stay hotel, they have to have certain amenities available to qualify. We have some properties that have tried to meet that and maybe don't quite meet the intent of that, but they have people that maybe come and stay one night at a time or a week at a time, and all of a sudden, the total number of days that they've been there exceed 30 days, so now all of a sudden, they're claiming that they're exempt from the lodging tax. So that's where this gets to be a little tricky, is when they check in, you may not know how long they're going to be there. So there's not going to be a really clear mechanism on how to apply this, unless the ordinance said that 3% applies until day 30, and then the new rate applies. This just gives us a mechanism to calculate that when we go back and audit the hotel, that, okay, if they stayed 31 days, it's not a free pass now, it'll be a dollar a day. So it just makes the math a little bit easier. If it's less than 30 days, it's 3%. So it just helps us to administer the tax a little bit more efficiently.
Continue.
Continue. So, and maybe this goes into another realm that the city attorney needs to weigh in on, but how do we, how do we keep ourselves from making these apartments? You know, it's, are there different licensing requirements under the law? Like, what's the difference between extended stay hotel, that if I'm an oil worker and I'm here two years I live at, and having an apartment lease?
Mr. President, Alderman Blessam, that is a fine line, and it is a question. The extended stay hotels, they definitely feed, fill a need that we have, especially with some of the large projects that we have coming up in the community in the near future. We're anticipating, you know, significant amounts of workers that'll be here for an extended period of time, so we do need that. On the other end of the spectrum, there are those that will argue that we also need those properties that are dealing with the folks that are paying one day at a time or a week at a time, too. Because otherwise, those folks would have no place to be.
I continue. So with that in mind, how do we know now? We have a list of who the licensed hoteliers are in town, and they are subject to, under state law, they're subject to this, because this is all resident state law, right? Because that's the only way that we can even charge this, because it can't be city funds, it's got to go to a CBB. And so is, that's what it is? It's a list of approved hoteliers?
Mr. President, Alderman Blessam, every hotel in the city is required to file a tax return for the lodging tax, and we audit them annually. On an annual basis, we go and look through the reservations, do some testing processes, and look at the portfolios to see if they qualify for the exemption or not. And then based on the findings of the internal auditor, then we either send them a bill or, in some cases, they may be entitled to a refund.
And so if, and I'm remembering the conversation from April or May or whenever it was, a little bit here. So when properties change hands, that's where we can lose them, right? We don't know who the new guy is, or we don't know what's going on with the new one. So this seems really difficult to me. Like, how in the world do we know what's going on? Who owes us a return? Who owes us what? Is that the case? It seems really tough to calculate here.
Mr. President, Alderman Blessam, it is a challenge. It's probably the best way to characterize that. We are working with other agencies, in particular, First District Health Unit. They are sharing us some information on when hotels modify their license or change hands, so we can have that notification, so we can do those audits in a more timely fashion, so we can kind of cut some of that off at the pass. In today's world or in the past, sometimes we wouldn't know about an ownership change until we showed up to do the audit and didn't have access to the financial records. So we're trying to get that information in a more timely fashion. One of the things that was considered to accommodate that was a license that hotels would have to have through the city. When we were exploring that option, we came to this solution. First District Health Unit already requires a license, so we don't want to implement anything else. It's just another hoop for people to jump through. So they've agreed that they can forward us the information on those license changes, and we can take a little speedier action then.
Thanks. Further discussion.
President Janssens, can I respond to that as well?
Sure.
Thank you. We've also, Alderman Blessam, we also, since whenever this was earlier this spring, we've also communicate more. When I hear of a hotel, I mean, the lines of communication have opened up, I guess, to help remedy the challenges that have arose. I mean, there are six hotels sold between December and May, or maybe seven now. I just heard of another one. So there, it's an ongoing conversation and difficult to stay on top of. So certainly, that has, I believe, helped clean that up, and all we, it feels like all we can do is adjust, learn and adjust, learn and adjust, learn and adjust. And so that's what we've done so far.
If I can continue, just, so I think maybe my last question here. So with all of that in mind, with the difficulties that are there, all the different challenges that we have, it's important to me that we put something in place that, number one, you feel really comfortable enforcing and making sure that it works, and it's a level playing field. Because, you know what, yeah, there's the people that, if there are little bits of games being played, I get all that, but the guy who's doing it right every single time and paying us, paying you guys exactly what he should be, that's the one I worry about, right? Because we need to make sure that we take care of the good hoteliers in town and that are doing a great job. And so anytime anybody else is doing something different, that's where we need to be a little bit concerned. So what I want to make sure of is if we do put something new like this in place, that you can enforce it, and it works really well, and it's meeting that need. For me, it's not the highest dollar amount, it's not any of those things, it's something that makes sense, is enforceable, and you can work with. And so is that this? Is there another configuration that would be better? What's your thought on that?
President Janssens and Alderman Blessam, again, that's a, thank you for the question, the discussion. I mean, I have a good relationship with the Innkeeper Association and their leadership team. There's been multiple discussions about this, because truly, like you said, the ones, the hotels that are operating well and are well-managed and oftentimes, not always, but a general anecdotal thing is saying that if there's a lot of turnover, sometimes they've got some troubles with sustaining their operation, right? So it's, I have talked with the Innkeepers Association, the leadership team, they don't have another meeting for another couple of weeks, which I plan to attend. They wanted to see after tonight's meeting, how it shook out. I can tell you that the hotels that are operating well, in general, are very supportive of what Visit Minot does, and aren't concerned about implementing a new rule.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janssens.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're pushing up on two hours here. At the prerogative of the chair, we're going to take a five-minute recess. So everybody be back at 7:26, please. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to come back to order and continue with our agenda. We are on item 6.5, the bidding of snow removal operations for airport parking lots. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Alderman Fuller.
Second.
Second by Scott. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janssens.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes, yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. That brings us to item number seven. This is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for someone who wants to address the council to speak to us. We would ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes or so to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak that would like to. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayans, Eltinger. I have another meeting that started at 7:00, so I'm just going to be very brief. But I'm here tonight to briefly speak about a misnomer that has kind of spread throughout the state and to help calm a few fears. And the one word that seems to be ignored or overlooked or misjudged or something in Measure Four is unfair. Measure Four is not going to eliminate property tax. It is going to eliminate the unfair property tax. The funding is going to be there, just like with the schools. The funding's there with the schools at 50%, now it's up to 80% of the property tax paid by the state. Nobody questions that. I want to calm the fears, people aren't going to lose their jobs, state's going to cut the check based on whatever your 2024 budget is. Then you guys can still have special assessments, user fees, whatever you want, but nobody's going to lose their jobs. Nobody's going to go into a volunteer fire department with Measure Four, and I just want to calm a few of the fears that I'm hearing in the community that, and you guys all already know all this, but this is for the people, so that they understand how that measure works and just to, you know, let people spend the money. One of the intended consequences of Measure Four, people have more money to spend, there'll be more sales tax. That's all I have. Thank you.
Again, this is public appearances. Anybody who'd like to address the council, please step forward, sir. If you could give us your name and where you're from.
I'm here tonight to continue, to ask permission to continue the process on putting my home on a lot that I've been purchasing, and the city come put a no-work order on it. And it's a single-family home, there was a single-family home on there. We demoed it, and we're trying to put our home back on there. I don't know why they stopped. Our house needs salt. I don't know why they stopped. Our house meets all the requirements of a permanent residence. Illegal permanent residence when it's done. And I just need permission to continue work and move my family where we were going.
I think you wrote to us, got an email this afternoon, which I didn't see until kind of late in the afternoon. But it, it sounds like perhaps what we need to do is, is get with staff. And actually, Brian Billingsley, our person that kind of handles that side of things, will be back tomorrow. I wonder if it might be agreeable for, for us to have him get ahold of you and see what, see what situation is.
Meantime, we've been homeless since they put that sticker on our door. And we're doing nothing wrong. It says, we're trying to, it's not zoned for a mobile home. And it's, my house is not a mobile home when it's done and it's on, however, it's got to be set up. It's not, and it's just hindering everything, stopping everything.
Okay. Actually, maybe is, is Doug here, if he could help us with this little bit, or maybe, do you have any knowledge of this man's situation?
President Janser, members of the council. So the issue that was brought here is, we got a complaint from a neighbor that a mobile home was being moved on to a single-family lot. Through some research, we found out that this property is actually zoned R4, which is a remnant zoning district. But essentially, it would be equivalent to our RH, high-density residential. Back in the eighties, someone wanted to put some townhomes on a couple of lots over there. That project never came to fruition. But those lots remain zoned R4 with two single-family homes sitting on them with non, legal non-conforming entitlements to those two single-family homes. The single-family home that was on this lot prior to his mobile home move was demolished without a demo permit. The mobile home was moved on to the property without a moving permit and no building permit was applied for. The call was answered by our residential building inspector and my associate planner. Went out to the site to find they were placing what is a mobile home by the classification of the construction of the building on block piers, which is not allowed by our building code. It's required to have concrete piers poured with footings underneath of it. It was being placed on an R4 property, which does not allow for mobile homes. And it did not meet setback for residential lots for the placement of the home where the piers had been placed. So our residential building inspector placed a stop-work order on the property due to all of these issues. This one's a difficult case because all of the work has already been done unpermitted. The times where we could have provided guidance to the resident prior to this work being done were missed because no permits were applied for. At this point, planning department could find no paths to entitlement. The property could be rezoned to R1 under our current future land use map. However, R1 does not allow for mobile homes either. So we found ourselves in a position where we could offer no solutions other than remove the mobile home from the property because currently even just sitting there, it's a zoning violation. So I recommended to the resident that he come and speak to the city council. You are the only body who could provide any relief of where he's at to him. If no special dispensation were granted to this case, we would have to treat it as a zoning violation. There is no conditional use permit under our current future land use map. It does not allow for rezoning to mobile home. Tough case there. We try very hard to find paths to a solution for the residents in the planning division. But here, there just is, is not one available because of the current zoning and the current plan designation for this property. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Alderman, Bless them, you have a question.
Thanks, Mark. Doug, can you, can you give us, in the, in the email that we got from, from the resident, they talk about a manufactured home. Can you help us understand the difference between a manufactured home and what you're referring to as a mobile home?
President Janser, Alderman Bless them. I am not probably the best source of information on that. It has to do with their classifications under building code. We do have three mentions of types of what you would think of portable housing units in our code. One is a modular home. That's one that would be placed on a block foundation. A mobile home has a steel frame that can have an axle attached to it. This particular model does have that steel frame that would allow for an axle to be placed on it and it be moved like a trailer. That is what places this particular unit into the mobile home category. It has to do with the type of construction. So there's modulators, there's mobiles, and then there's prefabricated homes. They're all manufactured in some manner. The manufactured home, the modulators, the, you know, and, but the mobile home falls under a different classification because of its steel frame. And its inability to be placed on a block or concrete foundation, which is what would allow a home to be placed in a single-family residential neighborhood, is its ability to be placed on a permanent foundation.
If I can continue. So, you know, one of the things that's interesting to me, when we saw pictures of it being moved by Hueys, they moved it in one block. I mean, if, to me, in my mind, I'm thinking if this is a double-wide trailer, they normally split, I think, and, you know, there's a lot of different ways that they do this. They move this more like I would see Hueys move a stick-built home. And that, and that, I guess where it leads my mind to is, I understand, which I think you already answered this, but there is not a path for them that says pour a concrete foundation and place the home that is already there, sitting on blocks from Huey, and go ahead and roll. You're saying that that, that does not work under the current classifications of the zoning.
President Janser, Alderman Bless them. I am simply deferring to the determination that was made by the residential building inspector that this house falls under the classification of mobile home. And mobile homes are only allowed to be placed in mobile home districts under our current zoning code. So could they build a foundation that it could be set on? Possibly, but it doesn't change the classification as a mobile home and it not being allowed in our single-family residential. This is, this is something that could drastically change the character of our single-family residential neighborhoods throughout the city. And it's my understanding that that was the reasoning behind disallowing mobile homes in our R1, R2, and other single-family districts.
Well, if I can continue, is there, is it in, and maybe for the city attorney, is it in ordinance today, what these definitions are? How do we, how do we know what type of home a home is?
President Janser, Alderman Bless them. A lot of those definitions are going to be found within the land development ordinance, and that's the, Mr. Diedrickson's kind of the expert in that regard. The commercial building code, which the city has adopted, also holds some of these definitions as to what a mobile home is, what a manufactured home is. So we would defer to those particular codes. You won't see it in our code of ordinances. I don't think we have a explicit definition for a mobile home or manufactured home. But it, it does depend upon the district, like what, what Doug has indicated here. And so one concern is the city attorney that I have with this is that if you're going to allow this specific interest, which is currently contrary to our code, there'd have to be some logic behind it if another person were to apply that would, the city has to treat similarly situated people the same. And so it kind of opens the floodgates and creates that slippery slope. If you're going to allow one person who has a mobile home or something that's characterized to the same to be in the R1 district and another person applies under the same circumstances, we can't discriminate between the two. There has to be an explicit reason as to why you would allow that in this specific instance. And I, I don't know that I've heard that in the testimony here today, why it should be allowed in this specific instance. It sounds as though this was just, somebody put the cart before the horse and they tried to move this mobile home here without applying for the appropriate permits, without knowing that the appropriate zone is there. So Doug, unless I'm, unless I've missed it or I haven't heard it, are you aware of any explicit instance as to why we would allow this circumstance to occur?
President Janser, members of the council, I, I will state that this neighborhood in question is, is diverse in its housing character. But it does, future land development in this neighborhood has been held to the zoning standards of the underlying districts as this neighborhood has redeveloped. There are mobile home district lots in the neighborhood. There's R1 district lots in the neighborhood. There are other commercial and residential zones present. But we, we are unaware of any instances where redevelopment has been allowed to take place that did not follow the underlying zoning district. Or where someone has been allowed to apply for a future land use map amendment and a zoning map amendment at the same time in order to gain entitlements, which would really be the only way we could get there in this specific case.
If I can continue.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, President Janser. And you'll maybe recall this, following the flood, we had similar situations to this. And, and again, I, I can't differentiate between what you would say was a modular home or manufactured home. But sprinkled through the city, we did make dispensations for property owners who did bring in manufactured homes. And, you know, I, I don't remember the number. I, I would say easily ten. And so I think that in the last decade, we have done this. And I, I don't recall all of the stipulations that we put in place, obviously, for this property owner. We would certainly want some permits taken out and we would want the proper piers put in place. But we did do this in the past.
I, I do recall that, Alderman Olson, and, and, you know, after, after the flood, you know, down in the valley, there were a lot of places, there are a lot of places where people frankly couldn't afford to rebuild. But they could afford to bring in a manufactured home of some sort. And I, I think we did, we did ask that they place it on concrete foundation. And that, that became their ability to get out of their FEMA trailers. So I, I do remember what you're talking about, and frankly, I think I voted for every one of them because those people needed the help.
If I may, President Janser, Alderman Olson, there is a caveat in our zoning ordinance that does speak to emergencies and this body's ability to declare an emergency and then grant those special circumstances to property owners under a declared emergency. That, I believe, is actually a zoning ordinance amendment that went through during the time of the flood, specifically to deal with the shortage of available livable space within the city just for our inhabitants. I mean, so many people were displaced from their home by that flood. Special actions needed to be taken. However, that, that does fall under a caveat that specifically speaks to emergency residential service.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Alderman Pittner.
Uh, thank you, President Janser. And I'll look to city staff, and this would have been before Doug's time. There was a property that we, in this neighborhood, that we approved being placed that I, I believe required some special action by the council. I actually believe it was on Forty-first Street Southeast. And again, I'm, I'm having some trouble, some difficulty remembering exactly which, which property it was. But if anyone on staff can remember, again, I'm trying to, trying to look it up. But it was, it was in a cul-de-sac on Forty-first Street Southeast. It was a modular home that was set, modular, manufactured. I can't remember. I've got the Word County GIS map, and I'm looking at names, trying to ring a bell, Richard Little, Richard and Tina Little, Alan Vernon. But like I say.
Mark. Scott. If I could, I did notice in that neighborhood, there's probably about three of them. One looks newer, where it could be the one that you're speaking of, Paul. I don't remember what it's on. I, when we talk about manufactured home and modular homes, a modular home is going to be just like any other house that you move in and you put it on a foundation, a true foundation. Block wall, basement, however you do it. It's stick-built. A manufactured or mobile home has a metal frame. And it has to be supported by that metal frame. So you can't put a foundation around it and set it on top. It's got to be supported by that metal frame. So it'd be the difference. And that's where they're talking about the piers that you have to put them on, how it's done now. I just, I, I have some concerns, and I guess I would like to ask him with Mr. Bergstedt if, did you talk to the city at all before you moved this home?
We bonded through the city. Boss and I were bonded through the city to, I don't know, I had the paper out front.
So you got a moving permit to move it?
And when I called, they, they said it was taking so long. They said, you need an inspection. And then I called and found out we didn't need it because it was Donnie that was demoing the house. The owner of the house and, so they said we were exempt from testing for asbestos and all that, and we could go ahead.
No, I'm talking about moving, the, the house that you moved in there. Did you, you had a, you had a, you had a moving permit to move that? You contacted the city?
And I did not come back to the city to move the house in.
Okay.
Because the house was a sa, a single-family dwelling. We were moving on there. And our house is legal to, I know, we did not contact the city to move it.
Okay. So then the other thing that, that I have is that on the letter that you sent us, you're looking for permission to allow your home to remain there for temporary occupancy while you have piers installed.
Well.
The way the house is sitting there now, the question I have for you is, how do you plan on putting piers on that home right now where it sits?
I have, I have a guy that will pour it and was gonna pour it. When, when they came there and called it a mobile home and put that on there, they also told Huey to set it down, and he was done.
Okay. So is it going to stay in the same spot? Because the only way you're going to put piers under that is to move that trailer house again.
Yes, sir. We will have, we will have to move it.
If we got to move it, put it back, either way, we're, the piers are going there. The piers are going to go there.
And we, we picked up the paperwork to convert to real property because that's what I assumed we had to do, is convert it to real property. And pour, and pour piers. And I think, sir, the one, it was Eugene Kraft, and it was on Forty-seventh Street. I did do some research about that and how that was allowed in a R1 zone. I know the people across the street are R1, excluding our manufactured homes, which we, meets one or more of the following criteria. And, and it said that a manufactured home which meets one or more of the following criteria, its main floor size is less than nine hundred square feet. Ours is thirteen forty-four. It does not have at least two exterior walls, each of at least twenty-four feet. Ours are forty-three feet. It has a roof pitch less than two and one-half inches. We have a roof, an asphalt shingle roof. Its roofing material is other than asphalt shingles, wood shingles, or tile. It was built before nineteen seventy-six. The ceiling of a majority of the rooms therein are less than seven and a half feet. And its outside appearance when ready for occupancy is such as to make it readily distinguishable from a site-built home. We don't meet, it says to meet one or more of those to be excluded, and we don't meet any of those. Our modular home with the deck attached looks like a still stick-built home to me. And I think it improves the integrity of the neighborhood because, like he referred to, there's a variety of homes and, and things there. And right now, if you look up on the city assessor's website, it says it's zoned for R4. Under R4, it says, "Single-family detached dwellings," which our manufacturer home on piers would be a single-family detached dwelling is kind of what, you know, we thought. We've never been homeowners. They, they raised the rent forty percent in Western Village, and so it was financially uncomfortable to live there, so we decided to. They raised the rent forty percent in Western Village and so, um, it was financially uncomfortable to live there, so we decided to. Um, with the help of, um. My husband's boss, um, obtained this land and then also to convert the land to real property. Would be the homeowner and the landowner have to be the same person, which would hold true. Um, and I I withdrew. Almost all of my retirement to move our home, um, and now we're, we have nowhere to live.
So it has to be to make it a legal residence, uh, permanent residence, put on peers according to the state of North Dakota. And I'm sorry about the, uh, I wasn't aware of permits. We got bonded and we thought it was good and they said it was good, that that we were exempt because the homeowner was tearing it down. Or the landowner was tearing it down. So we went ahead and did it.
And Kevin Huey said, are you current on your property taxes? And I said, yes, of course. And he said that, um, he had his wife go to the auditor's office to get. That we were current to be able to move it. So I thought he was responsible for the movers permit since he was the one to take it, but. Um. So we've been, we stayed in a hotel a few days and with my daughter for a few days, but, you know, we we planned to do the appropriate paperwork to convert it to real property. And I paid to move it to to set the peers, but right now we have a sticker on it with. We can't do nothing right now.
Cause they're calling it a mobile home. So that, uh, so when it's done to the, uh, and to the, and legally, it won't be, it ain't. It ain't right now.
But there's several, probably a dozen within, you know, a few blocks radius of us are nice manufactured homes. That are an improvement from some of the nineteen thirty stockpile apartments that. Are definitely questionable neighborhoods, so I don't think we would devalue the integrity of the neighborhood. I think, and I did attach a photo. And a separate email of our home, um, it has bay windows and, um. I guess we're here just to ask for, it's our primary residence and we're willing to do what we have to, to meet the criteria of what. The city sets forth, but when we went there, we don't get many answers. We we were told it's not R four, but on city, on city assessor's website, it says. R four today, but then he said it was converted to R H to build condos. Um, and so I would assume that just like the manufactured homes in R one were grandfathered in. Um, you know, there's the two properties that are are R four are both single-family homes and then they changed this. And I don't, it's just so confusing.
Another property, like she was saying, if there's anybody else, there's another property right next door that's a single-family home. And in the same R four because of a guy that used to own the land a long time ago. Had its own different, or I don't know how that works, but it says, s- single-family detached dwellings, apartments, condos or townhouses. And I'm just trying to put my family's home there, just like there was a single-family home there before.
Okay, so I, yeah, this is always dangerous to do, but I looked in the land development ordinance and started trying to read through it because it's. You always have to dig into these layers that are deeper. There is no definition whatsoever for mobile home, not there. Manufactured home is the, is the definition that I think is applicable here. It says a single dwelling unit which is prefabricated in factories. And transported to site pursuant to federal housing regu- regu- regulations. Manufactured homes may be composed of a single section or multiple sections which are assembled on site. And so it sounds to me like that is the, that is what the definition is here. So it meets the manufactured home definition. Then if you go up into the allowable uses table, um, which Doug, I think this is kinda where you were at, you get to the point where that definition, actually, it's pretty limited. It it, there aren't many places that they can go, um, and actually, if I'm reading it right, that you can't go into really any of the Rs. Um, you can go into MH. And I think that's the only one. Is that your reading of it?
So a couple of things to touch on, yes, we do have a manufactured home district specifically carved out in our zoning ordinance. For for these types of homes, uh, would fall over top of what you would think of as a mobile home park. Uh, we also have other areas of the city that are allowed to be rezoned. Things very important to point out that'll mention there's other mobile homes in this neighborhood. The block across the street from this property is zoned primarily R one. But has a future land use designation of mobile home community. So any owner of any lot across the road could come in and ask for a rezoning to mobile home. That is probably what you saw as special action of the council. You probably approved a rezoning. And I know that at least two of those lots have been rezoned to mobile homes and mobile homes have been placed on them. Um, this particular one, we're we're running into a lot of zoning stuff here. Back in the eighties, somebody rezoned this to R four, which would kind of be our RH, but not exactly our RH. Um, it likely should have been changed prior to now. Um, the two single-family homes were legal non-conforming, as long as they were there, they were allowed to be there. The home that they demoed, they actually could have replaced with their same-for-same clause. They could have replaced it with a single-family home. Of the same footprint, um, or they could have just come in and asked the planning commission and this council to rezonate to R one. And built any single-family home on that property. Unfortunately, the future land use map does not designate this for mobile home community. So that's where we're running into, we're running in, we we tried all of these different avenues and we just kept running into roadblocks, um. All of this would have been advised at the time of permit application. So without the moving permit, um, and I would like to point out that, yes, they did have a demo bond in place for the demolition of the home. But that is not through the city, that's bonding for the contractor. Um, essentially, we require that bond in case they don't finish the job. You got a half torn down house. Then we go after that bond to finish the job so that it doesn't fall to the taxpayers to finish the job. A demo permit is a separate thing entirely, so is a moving permit and a building permit. All of three would have been required for this project.
So so the, a- again, back to what I was saying before about what what are the definitions? I just read the manufactured home definition, doesn't say anything about rails, doesn't say anything about axles, doesn't say anything about anything other than. Was it manufactured somewhere else and brought to the site, which I think this meets that requirement. And I think Doug, actually, I'm 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 going where you are here, I think. Which is that once it's determined that it is a manufactured home under the land development ordinance. Then we are severely limited with where it goes, which I think then leaves us with with what you've discussed now, which is. Um, there's a couple of options here. They've got no option on this site. I mean, i- i- to the letter of the law, I think that's probably where we're at. That's the way that I read the land development ordinance as I re- look at it. Except for this provision for an emergency, right? And and I guess I would, I would ask the rest of the council, I I think what we have to determine here is, is a family that's now homeless. Does that constitute an emergency? And I I think, I think that's where we're at. I think that is the question before us, actually, is does this reach that point? And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into that. I'm glad that you kinda had the background on what that neighborhood was and that we've had a few more of those. The ones that I remember along Fifth Avenue, you know, on the backside of Oak Park, where after the flood, there was a couple there that were put in, I believe, that were manufactured in that area. Um, and again, you know, I, one of those were a a family friend that was able to get back into their home because of that. Um, you know, there's a different type of displacement going on here, you know, I I guess I leave it to all of us to decide in our own way. It, does that reach the point of an emergency? But I guess my final question to you on that is, is is, did I state this correctly? Is that the decision you feel is before us?
Uh, President Chancellor, Alderman Blessam, yes, that's essentially where we're at, um, there's, there's no path. She mentioned those different carve-outs, if you have to meet one of those, that's what allows for like those modular homes to be brought in, placed on a foundation. They're manufactured offsite, but they're placed on a foundation and essentially become a stick-built home that, just like the one that's built there. A manufactured home is all of the rest of them that are manufactured elsewhere and we don't allow for it in our our districts. And there was no path to entitlements that the planning division could find after the fact. So our recommendation was to come to you and it get, essentially, you need to determine whether this constitutes an emergency. In which you would allow for a manufactured home to be placed in a single-family residential neighborhood. Um, I would still recommend that the zoning be changed to at least single-family residential. Um, just as a recommendation going forward into the future, but, uh, is this an emergency in your eyes?
Alderman Pitt, I'm sorry, did you have something further?
Yeah, it it might, just my, my last clarification on that, so w- the rezoning would be, is is it mainly to get it out of the R four? Which isn't even real anymore. Is that, is that the main idea?
President Chancellor, Alderman Blessam, yes, that that's, it's a remnant zoning district that, yeah, we don't even really use it anymore. Um, it would have been kinda like a townhome district or apartment district in the mid eighties.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, uh, President Chancellor. Doug, can you take us through the process again? Had this, had had staff been a part of this at the beginning? A public hearing, I'm sure would have been issued for rezoning. I mean, another concern that I have is, are we subverting the rights of of neighboring property owners to have their voice heard and and their opinions heard? And kinda bypassing that?
Uh, President Chancellor, Alderman Pittner, yes, had a demo permit been applied for, staff would have been brought into the conversation. And the pro- process would have been completed. They would have let us know what their future plans were and we could have advised them accordingly. Uh, a moving permit requires a public hearing, which would have given the neighboring properties the opportunity to come and speak to this council. Um, a building permit would have only been issued if a rezone were applied for. Again, that would have had a public hearing before the planning commission and two readings in front of this, uh. Uh, council, but one of which would have had a public hearing again for the neighboring property owners to come and speak.
City manager.
Not to, to continue to belabor this and make it more complicated, in the email from the property owner, they stated that staff told them that. This is a RH, high-density residential district with a PUD overlay. Is there a PUD overlay over this property?
I am unaware of any planned unit development in this area. Um, it would have just been an R four. Which an R four may be like the equivalent of an RH with a PUD overlay now? I'd have to check the zoning conversion table for remnant zones. Um, it may be the case that the equivalent zoning district to R four would be RH with a PUD.
Okay, cause the reason I ask is a a PUD is. It's kind of a tool that cities use to kinda help. Deviate from some of the rules and the ordinances in place, uh, so it provides some flexibility. But then once you approve a PU- PUD, you're pretty much locked into those rules as approved. And and so that's why I ask is if if there is a PUD overlay, was there, that would have potentially been an exception to allow manufactured homes in this area. Under the PUD, which would have subverted some of our other ordinances and those kinds of things, but if there's no PUD. And we don't know what those rules are defining what's allowed and what's not allowed. It either complicates it or simplifies it depending on what the answer is.
Uh, there is no PUD in this neighborhood. PUDs, like you stated, could be, allow for a great deal of flexibility. For this planning commission and for this council on the front end. Once they are approved, you've essentially agreed to a set of rules that this property will be developed under going forward. Um, one final thing I would like to present, uh, Mr. President and members of the council, uh, remember that the current placement of this home. On the property does not meet setbacks for a single-family residential district. You, uh, Alderman Samuelson had brought up whether it needed to be moved for the peers. It will be need to be moved in order, even if. I would recommend that we at least impose at a minimum residential design standards for this lot. Whichever direction you choose to go, that would be like setbacks, uh, minimum distances between buildings, all of those. Fire code requirements as well, the the, they're all wrapped into those design standards for the lots. It's very, those are very important beyond just. Planning and zoning, it's, there's a safety and, uh. Well-being factor there.
Mr. Chairman. Alderman Blessam.
Doug, is there, it, does it, does it actually fit? Like, it, i- if it's positioned correctly, can it meet those?
Uh, President Chancellor, Alderman Blessam, I would need to see a site plan in order to approve a site plan properly. There's, there's a whole list of requirements that I and my associate planner go through when we receive a site plan. To check it for compliance with those design standards. I believe that a house this size could likely be placed on a lot that size and meet setbacks. But I I hesitate to answer with a hundred percent without seeing a site plan that then we could apply our metrics to and approve.
I was just worried about proving the opposite, like there's no way, like, you know, just, it just can't fit. So if we think that it's at least open, then that leaves the question open.
I speak, today, when I, um, when I researched, um, when we were told that it went from R four to RH. On the city of mine a website, it says, the previous zoning district was R four planned district, planned resident district. And it says the new zoning district from your website says RH, high-density residential district or planned unit development. That's from the city of mine, uh, today.
I think that clarifies my question previously then. The PUD is an option where some of this could happen, but if a PUD hasn't been applied for or approved, then it's not in place. So it's an either or. And it sounds to me like the PUD was not approved and is not in play here on this, on this issue, so.
Uh, President Chancellor, uh, Mr. City Manager, I I'd like to point out that what she's referring to is our zoning equivalency table. It's a table, but it lists all of our, those remnant zoning districts I referred to, zoning districts that no longer are used. Or appear on our map or we don't place in the city anymore, but have in the past been placed. So if someone came into me and said my property is zoned R four, I would go to the district design standards for RH. Or tell them that they are eligible to apply for a planned unit development. So it's just, how do we treat these remnant zoning properties now that those districts no longer exist in the code?
Alderman Olson.
Well, thank you. So Doug, an- another question, so. If we're able to find a way to yes, and and there's a lot of roadblocks there, but if we're able to find a way to yes, what's the timeline on this? They, assuming that they have to have the right peers, assuming they have to have the right setbacks, all of that. What what's best case scenario for this couple?
President Chancellor, Alderman Olson, that would be a building inspections division question. I am not sure what their timetable, I, if we, if I and my associate planner received a residential site plan tomorrow. We could have it done by the end of the day. Um, it it's, it's not really that complicated to deal with the, uh. Approval of a residential site plan from the planning division side. As far as issuing of building permits, that you would need to speak to our building official of what the timetable is. For approval of something like that.
Alright, thank you.
I guess I just question if, you know, when we were told we weren't R four anymore, which the assessor's office says we are, um. Why it went, like, I I'm reading it specifically, if you previously were R four planned residence unit. You are now RH, high-density residential district or planned unit development. And that was the zoning change that when I researched off the city of mine, uh, it says previous and then the new. So I would assume the RH with the PUD.
We're, we're not trying to sneak a mobile home into a residential district. Uh, it is, uh, we're willing to do whatever it takes to make it, it's gonna be a legal. Residence according to the state of North Dakota. If our house is eligible and meets none of the requirements of being a mobile home. Family detached dwelling when it's presented at the end and it makes the neighborhood way better. And that's always been there this this whole time.
It is kind of a.
Was a family, single-family dwelling.
Neighborhood, but, um, and I don't have an, I have two thousand dollars left in my retirement. I can't move.
I don't plan on building an apartment building anytime soon. You know, I want my home in a house on land that, that, and that's all it's gonna be used for.
Alderman Blessam.
Yeah, so so just, I just wanna clarify one thing for you guys, so as we're, as we're talking about the move from R four to RH. That you're, that you're mentioning, and I understand that, as I look at, as I look at our use tables in the land development ordinance. Neither one of those are gonna allow the manufactured home. And that's, that's why I I think the way that I I talked about with Mr. Dietrichson here is that. If we are able to move forward. if we are able to move forward, it would have to be under this emergency clause that we've, that we've got available to us. Um, because as I, as I look forward at it, there is a reason that we have these in our laws and we stick with them. Doesn't mean there aren't times when there are good times to, to do something different, and this may be that. But I just want to make sure that we're clear, because I, I know that you've, as you've looked through it, you, you've gotten a picture of how they lay out. I've tried to kind of verify that, and the, the manufactured home fits very specific zoning categories. It's, it's really tough to fit those into other ones without the emergency in place, okay?
So-
City Attorney.
President Chancellor and Alderman, bless them. So forgive me, I, I found out about this particular matter during the break, when I was emailed the email on this particular matter. So I am learning about this as we go here. Doug and, uh, Alderman, bless them, can you point to me the emergency exception that you are, you're, you're pointing to? Typically, emergency exceptions, they exist for situations that are beyond the applicant's control. And in this particular situation, it appears as though they're here by their own doing. And so I just want to make sure whatever emergency exception that's being referenced here makes sense.
President Chancellor, uh, the attorney, the, the, I believe it was done under the Emergency Residential Services caveat in our zoning ordinance, which I think at this point has actually been modified to specifically deal with like victim-based housing less than emergency-based housing. I am not entirely certain that the clause under which 2011 emergency housing was allowed to be placed still exists within our zoning code the way it was used at that point. I think with the 2021's code rewrite, that was removed.
And that's what I was seeing in our definition section, was emergency residential services are contemplated as facilities or use of a dwelling to provide a protective sanctuary for victims of crime or abuse, including emergency housing during crisis intervention for victims of race, abuse, or physical beatings.
That, that was a change made to our code. I, I'm not even sure that we have a caveat in there anymore that would cover this. I know that emergency residential services under a broader definition, I believe, is the, what was used during the 2011 flood, and it had to do with like a declaration of an emergency by the city council.
And so President Chancellor, if I can continue. So, uh, Mr. Dietrichson, when did you find out about this particular scenario? This situation, when did you find out that this was happening?
President Chancellor, uh, City Attorney, yeah, it was a complaint lodged by a neighbor. It would have been, say, last Thursday?
Okay.
It was the end of the week last week. Um, it was brought to our attention by a neighbor when the property, when they were moving this on to the property, a neighbor noticed that it was a mobile home and called the city to report that.
And the stop work orship, order must have been issued Thursday, Friday?
It was issued within hours of us getting the complaint. Obviously, our residential building inspector in the Planning Division didn't want this project to go any further before these entitlement issues were dealt with. Um, it had already clearly gone much further than we'd like before we catch it, yeah.
Okay, and I guess by directing these individuals here tonight, are you under the impression that the council has the authority to overturn the building officials' order, their stop work order, and allow these individuals to continue to install their home?
I would not recommend that be the action taken. I guess we were just looking for some direction on, um, the only way that we could move forward with them is through a comp plan, map amendment, a zoning ordinance, uh, map amendment and, or possibly a text amendment within our land development ordinance. There's nothing there that allows them to move forward now. Is there an avenue that the city council would support that would require changes either through text to the LDO or modifications to both of our maps to allow them to move forward? That, um, for council information, that's a months-long process. It would have to go through Planning Commission the soonest they could get on there would be October, likely November, with two readings in front of this council after the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, so is the question before the council essentially, does it have the appetite to support a text amendment and a land, future land use map amendment to change this land use designation for this property to allow mobile homes?
Either are we, do you have the appetite for changing the land development ordinance to allow for you to have the same authority you did after the flood, to allow for special circumstances, placing of mobile homes in residential districts on a case-by-case basis as assessed by this council, possibly Planning Commission? I would recommend that you include the Planning Commission if you went the text amendment route. Or are you open to a comprehensive plan, map amendment, and then a zoning map amendment that would, uh, that would require public input as well? Both are going to require that this council and the Planning Commission be open to the opinions of the neighbors in this neighborhood as well. I, I found myself at an absolute roadblock with this particular case and had nowhere else to send this resident than to you.
And I'm not from, if I may, President Chancellor, I'm not familiar with any mechanism off the top of my head that would allow the council to have a quick fix that's gonna get this couple into their home in the next few days. This is something that's gonna have to be worked through. Am I, am I missing something?
No, neither am I. Again, the, this was, I had nowhere else that they, they wanted somewhere else to turn, and I had nowhere else to direct them.
Okay, so as I see it, kind of the options for the council is, do you want to maintain the status quo? Do you want to look into the emergency exception? Or do you want to look into a future land use map amendment and a text amendment to allow mobile homes within these districts? And the future land use map will accommodate that?
Yes.
Right?
All, all of which are heavy lifts.
Yes. Yes, they are not something that's gonna happen within the next couple of meetings. It's, it's gonna be a couple of months.
Beginning of December likely would be the soonest for the timetable.
Okay. I don't know if that has clarified anything for the council or if it has muddied it further, but.
Alderman, bless him.
So to the City Attorney, one, I, I guess one question I would have, because I, I think you're right, as I look through it, I, I guess I would, Doug and I were just kind of going back and forth, and I got talked into this idea that there's this emergency idea. I don't see it there. So is there, would we have documentation from around the flood time that would at least help us understand how it was done then?
We could do some kind of historical ordinance research and try to kind of gather what exception existed at that particular time. Um, I, I have bits and pieces of this situation that Ms. Alderman Pittner is, is describing coming to mind. And I feel like there were some physical limitations that were involved there, maybe some ADA compliance concerns, if I'm remembering right, in that particular instance. But I, but I could be thinking of a different case altogether, but we could certainly do some legislative res- well, ordinance research for ourselves and try to refresh our memories to how that emergency.
And, and I would like to apologize. I, I, this was end of last week, holiday weekend, first day back in the office. I have not even had the opportunity to do that type of research. How was this done? I'm shooting from the hip kind of here, because we didn't get any chance to do that background research. Uh, we believe that it was done under interim use permits.
Okay, and that's, and that's where my mind was going, because I just saw that. Now, to me, the interim path feels a little, a little rough, um, because we, we want to, we want the long-term solution, actually. We, we don't want to say, "Hey, yeah, go ahead and hook it up, move in for a couple of months while we figure this out," because I don't know that that's a better solution for the final resolution. Like, I, that's tough.
Uh, President Chancellor Alderman, bless me. I believe, and the research that I quickly gleaned when I found out that I was gonna be here tonight and having this question posed, uh, what I was able to find was mostly revolving around FEMA trailers themselves and not necessarily diving into permanent housing solutions, um, for displaced residents.
Right.
I know that, we, we know, we're fairly certain that the FEMA trailers were allowed in residential districts under interim use permits, centered temporary use permits.
And, um, President Chancellor, if I may, um, the, I know the FEMA trailers, there did come a time, and it was right around the time when I started with the city in 2015, that the interim use permits for the FEMA trailers came to an end. And there was a very firm hand used, we cited three people into municipal court that refused to remove their FEMA trailers. And, and they were eventually effectively removed. So the, the whole permit, um, it, it contemplates there being an end to that, so. And in the interim, I don't know that I would advise doing anything so far as to release the building officials' order, ordering stop work, um, without knowing if there's a health, safety issue component to that as well. I haven't seen the stop work order. Um, I believe that it exists because you have told me that it exists, but.
The stop work order specifically cites building code violations and zoning code violations. I can speak to the zoning code violations. However, the building code violations, you would need to speak to our, our building official and our residential code inspector.
Okay, um, the mayor would like to weigh in. Tom?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, a couple of notes that I've written down here. You know, I, first of all, Doug, your compassion, um, I, I gotta commend you for your compassion while still trying to stay within the box, uh, of the ordinance. So, um, uh, I, I appreciate all the hard work and, and, and everything you're doing on this. You know, this is, it, what concerns me is, and I think it's already been said a couple of times, but, um, you know, it's gotta go through the right process. And the process allows for public hearings. And I'm probably saying plural. There probably need to be two public hearings if we're dealing with something like this. So there has to be that. We, we've gotta give the other residents of that neighborhood an opportunity to provide input onto this. But because of this, because of what's happening in our mobile home parks, this is going to come up again. There are going to be more mobile homes moving out of these parks that are jacking their rents, and they're gonna be moving. And I, I, and that concerns me. Um, and I mean, and unfortunately, they're looking for immediate resolution to this, when this was the first, Monday was the first day the council heard of this. And, and I just don't think, I, I, with, with the public hearings and going through planning, I don't think we can do an end-around of the processes that have been in place for years on, on a situation like this. So there's a lot of concerns for me, but then again, I also come back to, you know, Doug bringing it to the council and, and, you know, um, having this discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
City manager.
Just briefly to circle back to the emergency conversation, typically those are put in as safety valves for communities that when something more or less catastrophic is happening to a community that affects multiple property owners outside of their control, things like the 2011 flood, a tornado, a fire that takes out many homes, those kinds of things, that you're running into a situation that was beyond the property owner's control, but the community has a need to respond quickly and more quickly than our typical processes would allow. Typically, a case-by-case basis like this is not gonna qualify as an emergency declaration. You know, when, when the city council declares emergency declaration, it's an emergency declaration for the entire community, not just for individual situation. The only exception to that would be some administrative things, like if we have a water main break or something like that. Sometimes we have a clause in there that we can circumvent our procurement policies to get something fixed more quickly, uh, because we have people out of water or a road repair or whatever that may be. But I'd be very careful about just using our emergency declaration to fix a problem that doesn't fit in a box.
And to expand on what the City Manager just said, we do have a variance process that's contained within our land development ordinance where hardships can come into play if there are circumstances that are outside of the, the landowner's control. Doesn't speak specifically to emergencies, but it does speak specifically to the hardship cannot be created by the landowner. It automatically disqualifies you from all hardship if you are the reason the hardship exists.
Alderman Fuller.
Is the hardship being created by the landowner or by the property owner that bought the mobile home park and jacked the rent up forty percent? Because I mean, if somebody came to you tomorrow and said, "Hey, here's your mortgage, but we want forty percent more," you're gonna probably look to move too, wouldn't you, Doug?
I would. Uh, President Chancellor Alderman Fuller, it's state century code and, uh, does not allow for hardships to be cons- financial, financial is disqualified. I understand where you are coming from, but financial hardships are specifically disqualified from hardship considerations when it comes to a variance. Not that I don't understand that these people are in a very rough spot and there are limited places in the city for them to move.
I feel like our hardship is coming from the complications of all the different zones that were, first it was R four and now it's this, but there are still single-family dwellings on there. So it's confusing, the zoning for there, when there's manufactured homes all around us.
There's two, two lots that are R four, that they're calling it, and they're only R four because somebody that owned it before had it zoned their way. That's the only two in the whole.
They, they were gonna put townhouses or something on it, and that's why it was zoned that way, and then he sold it, they sold it to the current owner, Jessen's. And so it's, I think the hardship is the complication of the zoning. Because even in R four zoning, it says it'll, it permits single-family detached dwellings, which if I'm, if my understanding is a manufactured home placed on a permanent foundation is then converted to real property, would be a single-family detached dwelling.
And now finding out about the process of doing that, we weren't willing to do that, and I'm sorry that we didn't. Horribly sorry that we didn't, but that it, it's always been a single-family home on there, and that's all we're trying to do is put it one back on there. Nobody's ever gonna use that for, uh, apartments or, and nobody has. Whoever got it rezoned in the first place is, it don't exist anymore.
Your President, if I may, because we've talked about this ad nauseam and kind of probably well out of the bounds of the purpose of personal appearances on the agenda. My recommendation is, is that staff meet with the property owners as quickly as possible. Staff will try to look through different alternatives and potential changes and process and timeline to bring back to council. But it's not gonna be a quick solution. I mean, we're not gonna come up with a solution that they can live in their house by the end of this week or even into this month. It's, it's gonna be a long process. Staff can try to identify some ways forward in, in a timeline. But if I'm speaking to the public, this is the reason why just reading the city's website and reading ordinances and trying to interpret that isn't enough. In my opinion, that's kind of like going on WebMD and trying to self-diagnose your illness without going and talking to a doctor. I would recommend people that when you're doing these types of things to come in and at least verify with staff that you're reading and interpreting what you're seeing correctly, and we can help correct these things before we get into a position like this. I, I push my staff all the time to try and find ways to make it work within the rules and regulations that we can. And if we can't, then that's when we bring it to council to talk about potential changes or considerations to make that work. But that's quicker and easier to do at the beginning of the process, uh, than at the end. And I'm, I'm sympathetic to these individuals, right, trying to get out of a difficult situation. Uh, I feel like they feel like they did their homework. Uh, unfortunately, I think there was just some misunderstanding here. But the commitment I'm willing to make is staff is willing to sit down and talk. We can talk about a rezone. You know, we can encourage them to apply for the appropriate permits and those kinds of things, and we can try to expedite that through the process as best we can and make it a priority, but that's still gonna take some time.
Alderman Olson.
Uh, just one other clarification on this. As this process moves forward, I don't want this couple to endure any other additional costs. And so is, you know, within a reasonable timeline, I would like that house to be able to stay there, even though there is- Even though there is a zoning violation with it being there, I would hate to see them have to move it and move it again. Is there a way to make that happen?
President Janser, Alderman Olson, we could defer enforcement until the situation can be discussed with the landowner and staff. I, I would, I would seek a motion to have, or some sort of direction to have me defer enforcement because any other property owner in the city where I would find a zoning violation on their property, it would be an immediate action by the code enforcement staff to go out and take action on that zoning. Some sort of direction on deferment and under what circumstances I am having staff defer zoning violation code enforcement action on this property.
So, so if we were to have some, some kind of a motion that would hold the enforcement in abeyance for ninety days or a hundred twenty days or something like that, that would kinda buy time and or provide for some wiggle room.
I, the president Janser, I would ask the city attorney, is this something that's like, I'd say a ninety day window to allow for proper applic-, is this something that would be legal to, to do?
I mean, the city council can direct staff to defer enforcement on, on its code. But on the other hand, our customer service survey said that code enforcement was to be a priority, and that's what we've heard throughout this. So it's when it becomes a priority now, we're, we're deferring it. And so it's, it's sending a very confusing message to staff. But if that's the council's, the council's desire, I, we can defer enforcement of the zoning code. But there's still a building officials order there, and typically any building code violations are all stemming in an effort to maintain life, health, safety standards. So even if we defer enforcement of the code at this particular time, it's I, I'd ask for a date certain that the council would like us to do that.
All the, President Janser, all that deferring code enforcement on the zoning code violation would do is move any the process that leads to abatement would push that out. So that we aren't starting this process that leads to first letter, second letter, third letter abatements, you know, demo orders and things like that. That's what happens through code violation cases. As the city attorney mentioned, I would not recommend suspending in any way the building officials, no, you know.
I understand.
It's not a safe structure at this point is what they've determined.
Thank you, President Janser. Is, is the property hooked up to water and sewer?
President Janser, Alderman Pittner, no. As my understanding has not currently been hooked to water and sewer, that that appointment had been made, but with the stop work order tag, the contractors weren't willing to proceed with that process.
Okay. Again, if I may continue, that I don't know if you can let someone stay in a house without running water and sewer. I, I, that's not something I'm interested in.
No, and certainly, that was not my point. My point was just so that they did not incur an additional cost to both the house.
Okay. So I think where we're back to is the city manager's suggestion that the, the staff put their heads together and try to come up with a way forward on this that can be brought back to us. Whether that be at a regular meeting or if we need to have a special meeting to do it. So that we can, we can try to resolve this somehow. I mean, the, 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 the difficulty is that this got as far as it has in my mind, and you know, we're put in this position of having a family who doesn't have a place to live, and yet, you know, the process hasn't been fulfilled as the mayor said. So I think that's, I think that's where we are.
Mark? Mark? Do we need to make the motion then that Doug had requested that we make about deferring the enforcement of the zoning? So that doesn't go forward while they're trying to negotiate out with the, the homeowners?
I'm, I'm hesitant to say requesting that. I, like, the city attorney brought up, code enforcement has been, I've been driving home with my staff. This is a priority. This is something that this, the residents of the city might not really want us to pursue.
Let's, I, I guess, before we went that direction, I think it would make sense to let the staff have at least, you know, a day or two to see what they can come up with rather than, than leap some direction tonight. Alderman Pittner.
Yeah. Doug, what's the process for abatement? Let's just say we, we don't find a solution. What is that timeline, I guess? I mean, we're not gonna be pushing up on like six days and all of a sudden.
No. President Janser, Alderman Pittner, this is months long process as well. It's not something that's gonna, we're not gonna be demoing the house next week or coming back at the next council meeting with a request for, for a demo permit. This is months and months long.
Point being, if we work within the confines of, of, of the tools we have, we're still not gonna be against the clock, running against the clock to, to find a solution, so.
Okay. Folks, I'm sorry, there isn't a better answer to this. This is a, this is a, a bad situation for, for you certainly. I understand that. And as, and for us as well, because we have a bit of our hands tied here. But be assured, we will continue to follow up on this and try to get to an answer as quickly as we can.
So those lots, there's two of them. And it's only zoned R four because somebody owned it before. And other than that, there's been a one single family home on it for, since nineteen thirty eight. I'm sorry we didn't get the right permits.
And he'll just go on and on if I don't stop him about the same thing, but we thank you for your time.
Okay, we're still in personal appearances.
It's late, so I'll be brief. My name is Wendy Bagley. I'm a resident of Minot. Thank you so much for being here and giving us the opportunity to speak. Just to lighten things up a tiny bit, if you guys remember Saturday morning cartoons back when we were kids, Schoolhouse Rock had an awesome cartoon called Tyrannosaurus Debt. And I'd like to share just a tiny little bit of what it says. "We're spending money we don't have, or so it would appear. The deficit is that amount we overspend each year. Though congressmen and senators make vows to cut its size, despite their honest efforts, the debt just seems to rise." When this cartoon was released, they actually said the very next part in that cartoon says, "Now the debt's over five trillion dollars and still growing." I just looked it up, and the US federal debt or national debt is thirty five point twenty eight trillion dollars. And that's according to the Utah, US Treasury Department. The spending does seem to keep rising. And I know we're here at city council, we don't, you know, this is federal government that that cartoon pointed to. But I, it, it brought to mind, when I was going through my political science courses in college, we studied for a semester on national debt and the nature of bureaucracies. And we saw how it is in the nature of bureaucratic theory that bureaucracies or agencies tend to keep spending unless the elected body who approves that budget keeps it down. And one of the reasons, there's many of course, but one of the reasons is because if you're an agency director and your budget is cut, that is a bad thing. You did something wrong. If your budget is, is expanded, ooh, that's great. You did something wonderful. They must really like you. And, you know, listening to the Visit Minot presentation just a little bit ago, you know, she said, "We're, we're doing our best to be very conservative. We didn't, we're underspending." For taxpayers, that's a very good thing. I do recognize that what that means is as we're in budget season and as all of you here are looking at the city budget and making those difficult questions, those difficult decisions, I want to applaud you and thank you. And, and particularly for the new city council members, but for all of you to engage in that discussion because it is difficult. And it does need, there does need to be that pushback. We elect you here to provide that pushback. And it doesn't mean if, if tax, if programs are cut, it doesn't mean that the program is bad. It means that there is a shifting of priorities. I do want to encourage the city council to decrease dependence on federal funding because very similar to back in the eighties and nineties, it's only continued to rise. The federal government keeps allocating funds that they do not have money to pay. Instead, they print more money, they increase inflation, and, and we're basically putting it on the backs of our grandchildren, and I don't want to see that happening. And of course, as we saw with Project B and multiple other things, it just leads to greater complications. So I encourage you to not, to decrease your dependency on federal government spending as much as possible. Now I'm going to put on my Sons of Liberty hat. I am the chapter chair of the, or the chair of the Minot Chapter of North Dakota Sons of Liberty. Our group started about a little less than two years ago, mostly people who had no experience in politics but were concerned and had a desire to learn and get involved. And we've been talking lately about the budget. We want to learn more. And so the question that I have for you, and I have to be honest, as much as I love politics, it is a difficult question for me. Where do we go to learn how to read a budget? Is there a place online? Is there someone we could talk to to help us understand what do the columns mean? What do the line items mean? I want to walk our members through that. We have a meeting next Monday. I don't know if there's a chance to have someone come out and teach us that. Or maybe I can meet with someone, we can record it, and I can share that with my members. I do know we have at least thirty members, and then we have four times that who see our social media posts. And I believe there is a hunger in the city. Not everybody has time to go through the hours and hours and hours of budget meetings that you all had to go through. But I'd like to do my part as a leader to help educate my people before the budget public hearings that will be happening soon. So that's, that's my question. And I'd also like to invite anybody from the community to come to our meeting next Monday. It's at the Moose Lodge at seven PM. Because we will be talking about the budget, not necessarily policy, but just how a budget works. So that's my question for you, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank, thank you. Any, any further? Okay, I guess no, no question.
I guess my question is, where would I go to find that information?
I'll be glad to come out next Monday night and meet with you guys and help you try to understand the budget.
Thank you, Alderman Fuller. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Finance Director Lakefield is approaching from behind you there, and he can maybe help you a bit as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, and ma'am, on the city Minot webpage, if you go on the finance department page, all of the documentation are there. There's several videos. There's a document about the city budget, explains the budget process. There's a, a series of things on there that can be informative. And you can always reach out to my office, and we can help you out with that, too.
So under the finance section?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Good answer. I guess we're still in public appearances, and we have at least one more.
Thank you for taking up all you guys' time. Good evening, President Janser, council members. My name is Mike Baker, and I reside at sixteen oh one Eighteenth Street Southeast. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today about some pressing concerns regarding my property and the surrounding area. I have two of these concerns. Firstly, I want to address the issue of city water being diverted onto private land, which is creating significant washouts on my property. This issue is not just a matter of property damage. It poses a serious safety hazard, especially for my children who play on this land. I am deeply concerned about the long-term effects of these water flows and potential dangers they present. I would like to understand what exactly is being carried down with the water. And more, more importantly, why public water is being redirected onto private property in the first place. I seek clarity on the legality of such actions and urge the council to take immediate steps to rectify the situation. And then can the council please provide an explanation, any explanation of how this is legal? I guess that's the first one.
Okay. Why don't you just proceed and then?
Okay. So the second one, additionally, I have concerns about a neighboring gravel pit. When I purchased my property, the area was zoned as R one. However, it has since become apparent that the gravel pit is operating on a commercial and heavy industrial site. I am left wondering how long these grandfathered-in rights, which I've heard many times, will allow such activities to continue without reevaluation. Furthermore, I am puzzled by the low taxes they seem to be paying while generating income and operating a business. This raises questions about zoning consist, consistencies and fairness in taxation. Can the council please clarify what is going to happen to rectify this situation and any other to come about? And then again, I urge the council to review these matters and provide answers and solutions that protect the interests of residents like myself who are committed to maintaining the integrity of our community. Thank you guys for taking this, I guess.
Okay, sir. Sir, can I ask, have you, have you had interaction with any of the staff members about these issues? I see the picture that is.
Yes, yes. So this, the washout that you're seeing occurring right now, I've been talking to the staff for a few years now back. There's a washout that happened. It was a hundred, a hundred feet off property line. Well, now it's on my property. I've talked to the staff about this, and it's like, well, it is what it is. That, that seems to be the answer I get most of the time. Well, it is, it's grandfathered in. We did this, we did that. Well, now it's here. It's at the doorstep. And since I bought this property, I've just been, it's coming at me, closer and closer. I've talked to the neighbors. This is of concern of the neighbors. They're starting to have washouts occurring on their property as well. In one of these photos, I think that you're gonna see the river that we talked about, that was talked about earlier with the flood protection. It's almost dammed all the way across the river itself from all the washout that's occurring. At some point, that's how much water is going across the property there.
You know, I guess we, we will, we will need to look into this issue, I guess. At this point, I, I'm unaware of it. I don't know if any of the other council members are, but we.
I just wanna say that I, I did speak with you, I believe, today, Mike, right? And I appreciate you sending the pictures. I did get them at like just after five o'clock. So I mean, he, he has reached out to me. I don't know what other staff members he has, but.
I mean, so we have your contact information, at least by email or.
Yes.
I have, yeah, I have emails.
So, yeah, I guess we, we will need, you know, some amount, a short amount of time here to
Yes.
dig into this and, yeah.
That's the one I would like for you guys to see. I, I know it's far away, but this is Surr's River right there. This is what, this is, if you look, the river is almost completely dammed across. You could see it on a GIS map or such as, I mean, we're spending millions of dollars on this project now. Thank you guys for your time.
Appreciate you appearing. Okay, anything else for personal appearances? Seeing none, we'll move on. Miscellaneous and discussion items. Item number eight point one is a consideration of whether there should be some updated ordinance related to parking of large vehicles, motorhomes, that kind of thing on, on the streets. And so there was a memo associated with this, I guess. If the council wants to take action tonight, we, we could do that. Otherwise, it may be that you want to give this some consideration and talk to some constituents. I can tell you that I have had multiple complaints from folks who live in a cul-de-sac, for instance, and somebody's got a very large motorhome and it's parked, except when they take it and, and go someplace with it, which can be days, weeks, hard to say. Just driving around this afternoon on the way to a meeting in, in my residential neighborhood, there were multiple large campers parked on the street. One of them had a pickup attached to it. There was another large enclosed trailer that was parked on the street with no vehicle attached to it. So I think that, that. Um, with no vehicle attached to it. So I think that, that there are some issues, um, with respect to this. And, um, I guess, uh, what are your thoughts? You wanna, Lisa?
Uh, thank you. I, I think it certainly does need to be addressed. I would be looking at, at item two, I think, is probably being the most appropriate where the city council could determine to update the ordinance to limit parking a motorhome travel trailer, camping trailer, physical trailer, enclosed trailer, utility trailer, or recreational trailer, or any other type of trailer on any street for a period not, uh, I guess, not to exceed twenty-four hours unless said vehicle is moved a distance of more than one block or three hundred feet, whichever is less. I make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Fuller. Discussion. Mike?
Um, I guess my, where I start at with this is, you know, probably heard me on other items that, you know, we want to start with. What's the most free answer we've got? Now, the complicating factor in this case is that it's not actually on their property. Here we're on city property. You know, it's one thing if you've got a camper parked in your driveway. It's a different thing if you're on the public roadway and that's, you know, creating some kind of hindrance. So to me, we're in a little bit different area there where I could be open to some, some restrictions on that. Um, I, I guess, first of all, I'd, I'd like to ask for a couple of clarifications. I tried to get this in the ordinances and sometimes I can't get through all of it. Um, my thought had always been that you can't leave a trailer on a public roadway unattached. Is that, is that even true in the ordinances today? Does anybody know that off the top of their head?
City Attorney?
I don't know that our ordinances are that specific, but I see Chief Klug approaching the podium.
Chief.
Ticket for it before, so I think it is.
Something along those lines anyway.
Should I take it for something?
President Janzer, uh, Alderman Blessam. Um, yes, the, the ordinance does require that a trailer be attached to a primary mover. So it has to be attached to a vehicle to be parked on the street.
And so if I can continue, and so the way that that, the way that went through my mind was, is that that, that trailer then essentially became part of the vehicle and then the vehicle is subject to the forty-eight hour rule. Is that, is that the right way to think of that today?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, and so for me, I guess my question would be with all of that in mind, um, is this truly a question of twenty-four versus forty-eight hours or is it an ordinance? Enforcement question again. Because, you know, I, that to me, changing the timeline, um, you know, I, I understand the, the three hundred feet, one block thing. I get that. That, to be honest, to me feels kind of gross. Like, I don't want you to go park it in front of some other neighbor's house down the street. If anything, put it in front of your own, right? I mean, that's, that's the way I would think of that. And I realize all the gamesmanship that goes with that. Oh, I move it twenty feet or whatever. I get it. But it is, in your mind, is this a code enforcement question overall and we're just nibbling at the edges here?
Yeah, so, uh, President Janzer, Alderman Blessam, I think the issue is, um, this is very, parking in general is very difficult and these complaints were, are normally a complaint-based response. So we aren't out, there's no way for us to patrol every street looking for every camper and try to figure out how long it's been parked. So at the point a neighbor complains, we'll go out, we'll take note of where it's at. And if it's still there forty-eight hours later, we can hang a parking ticket, hang a tow tag, and force that vehicle to be moved. So there's still a process after that. It doesn't just get impounded automatically. Uh, periodically throughout the summer, and especially throughout the winter to, uh, assist with street cleaning, both snow and, uh, just regular maintenance. We will send patrol out and like the vehicle's not attached to primary movers. If there's any trailers that are just parked on the street or any obvious vehicles that look like they've been abandoned, we'll take at those vehicles. We'll, you know, we'll do our best to try to get them moved. Um, so we do some, uh, proactive enforcement on those. Um, but when it comes to time violations, it's very difficult to do enforcement unless a neighbor steps up and says, hey, this vehicle's been parked here for three weeks, hasn't been moved, then we can go out and we can take the enforcement action. Um, I look to date, um, since Ja- January first this year, we've had two hundred parking complaints. I can't narrow it down to what type of complaints. Um, but we've investigated, we, we've had two hundred calls just dealing with parking complaints, so, um, it's not an overwhelming amount, but that also tells me that for the most part, people aren't bothered or not bothered enough to actually call us and let us know. So, um, some consideration there.
Alderman Pittner?
I, I just put a clarification. Does this, how does this work? And I'm thinking this from a contractor's standpoint. If I'm working on a project and I've got my twenty-four foot trailer and I park it in front of the project house and it's gonna be there for a week or two weeks, I mean, anything over twenty-four, forty-eight hours, now I've gotta take that home every day or I've gotta take it to the shop or, and, and I get that's maybe the nature of the beast, but at the same time, the solution in search of a problem.
Yeah, and, and President Janzer, Alderman Pittner, I, I think the, for the most part, we understand the contractor's position in those. I think the part we look at more is, is it attached to the primary mover? And I think that just helps with, is it more readily able to be moved? If we needed to in emergency, could that vehicle be moved quickly? Um, but I, you know, we don't, again, typically, um, based on the call volume we have, we don't have the time to go street by street and look for trailers and that kind of thing.
Uh, Scott?
So I, I kind of get where this comes from because I've, I've gotten a few, um, calls and have talked to a few people about it. In your opinion, does this, does this solve anything by changing what's here? I mean, it still goes down to enforcement, doesn't it? I mean, if, if you have to have it attached to a mover, doesn't this really, we already have it covered in our?
Yeah, and, and President Janzer, Alderman Samuelson, I think this complaint, the complaint that kind of spurred this was an actual RV. So we weren't even talking about a trailer, but what we got into is you can park a fifth wheel and have the same impact. If I want to look out my window and not look at the side of a camper, um, a fifth wheel's gonna be the same as an RV. Um, and then I took it to the next level because if I can't, can't park my RV, a pontoon's about the same. Uh, it's a big ugly thing sitting in front of your, your picture window. So from an enforcement standpoint, it's tough to say, well, that trailer's okay, but that one's not. So just trying to say across the board, a trailer's a trailer. Um, does it change anything? It, it brings it from forty-eight hours being the longest to twenty-four hours being the longest period of time. Um, I think the, the three hundred foot portion of that could be a little complicated when we start to, well, did it move three hundred feet? Um, or did it go a whole block? A block is easy. Um, but if somebody wants to make the three hundred foot argument, um, you know, the, the reason for that was, a lot of people will move it three feet and they'll say, well, it says it has to be moved, it was moved. So making it a block, three hundred feet, um, helps solve that problem. But it does put it in another person's neighborhood then.
So real quick then, if, if you gotta move it a block, so if I drive it around the block and park it back in front of my house, is that considered moving it a block?
The, the way it's written, um, it has to be on a, parked on a different block then.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thank you. We have?
Can, can we, oh yeah, well, do we need, do we need action here on this one? We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, adopt. Oh, and I think the mayor also welched away and, uh, mayor?
Well, no, I, I, thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's kind of hilarious. I, I was unaware of this ordinance, but become the mayor, then you'll find out about this ordinance. I had a, uh, you know, I had a camper parked out there and, and really what it, what it comes down to is, I think it's enforcement. It's, uh, I don't, the city doesn't have enough bodies to enforce this and I, it could be a combination of enforcement and education. You know, drive down my block, drive down, uh, a block south of me and, and you'll come across two or three trailers that have been parked there all summer. And it, it, it's no, it's no offense to John. I know his staff is bold and, and it's no offense to, you know, Brian and, and the code enforcement team. There, there's just not enough bodies to do this. Um, it, it's, um, i- i- it's, it's kind of frustrating. So I, I don't, I don't have the answer to it.
I, you know, I, as I've fielded a couple of these calls, sometimes it's just neighbors not being very neighborly to one another, you know, when, um.
Exactly.
So, okay, uh, city manager?
Just a couple of points of consideration on this and, and that is, uh, first and foremost, we're in a community in a region of the country that enjoys being outdoors. We have a lot of people that own campers and go to the lake on the weekend. We have people that like to ice fish and have ice houses and all these other kinds of things. So I'd, I'd urge some caution as you talk through this of how much we're regulating and going against the grain of culture within our region and within our community. And two is, you know, I don't own a trailer or a boat or any of these kinds of things. I did used to own a concession trailer when my kids ran a shaved ice business a long time ago. My concern about moving it a block away or three hundred feet away is it's no longer in front of my property, which means I can't keep eyes on it for a security purpose. And one, if I move it three hundred feet or around another block, one, those neighbors are kind of like Alderman Blessam said, are gonna be upset that I'm parking this big thing in front of their house. And two, they're not gonna care to keep the eyes on it that if somebody's breaking into it or doing something like that on it, they're not gonna have the same investment or interest in it when it comes to that. So just some key points to consider as you're going through this. At the end of the day, what we're talking about is neighbors not being neighborly and being concerned and, and maybe having some valid concerns, but at the end of the day, what is government's role to restrict this? We allow public parking on our streets all the time. Right? Uh, we do have some citizens and it's, this is common in every community that I've been in that, uh, think they have a right to the parking out in front of their property. They don't. It's public parking. Anybody can park there. Right? And according to our ordinances, anybody can park anything there. We do have some restrictions in how long that can stay there to keep it moving and so you don't, you don't just permanently camp and, and leave it there. But I, I'd encourage the council to determine what role of regulation should we have in this. And again, consider the factors of the culture of, in the fabric of the community.
City Attorney?
Um, President Janzer and Public Information Officer, I'm plugged back into dais number seven and I've pulled up uh, city ordinance section twenty dash twenty-four that has our, it's titled Parking of Heavy Vehicles Regulated, but subsection B is what states no person shall park a semi-trailer or any other trailer upon a public street if the semi-trailer or other trailer is not connected to a truck, tractor, or other prime mover. So, um, Chief Klug, I think this is the ordinance that you would cite the trailers on the streets under. Does that look right?
Challenging my vision from back there? Correct.
And Chief and President Members of the Council here, section twenty dash twenty-two, just a couple of sections ahead of that has the current overnight twenty-four hour and forty-eight hour parking restrictions. If you want to take a look at those in consideration with this, this proposal before you're here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? All right. Chief, thank you.
Just one thing and, and kind of in, in response to a little bit of what Harold said, I live in a cul-de-sac and at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's no homes down there. And so I have two neighbors, I guess I call them neighbors, on the opposite street that turn into my cul-de-sac that like to park their camper or their pickup or their boat and their pickup in our cul-de-sac and narrow our cul-de-sac way. So you can't, you know, you can't have two cars passing each other basically, coming in and out of the cul-de-sac at the same time. Um, they don't want to park them in front of their own places. They want to park them in our cul-de-sac. And so while I understand what you're saying, Harold, you know, I mean, we allow people to do that. Like in the winter, when they have that stuff parked there and the streets are icy and everything and you try and turn into the cul-de-sac. I mean, I've almost hit one of those vehicles two times. I'm, other neighbors have done the same thing. So, I mean, I, I, while I understand what everybody's saying, people take advantage of the generosity that's out there and, and that's, I think, why we're having to deal with this.
Okay. I see no further discussion. Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Ross? Ross?
Whoops, sorry, I was on mute. Uh, I, I went no.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
No.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion passes with a four-three vote.
So point of order, mister, uh, so that, that's a, is that our first reading on that or are we directing staff to go back and draft it?
No, this wasn't presented as a, a re, a first reading. So the ordn, the proposed ordinance, I believe, is drafted and has been attached to the agenda. So that's likely what will be presented for the council's consideration for first reading. So you'll see it for two more meetings here unless, um, and I don't know if staff has any other refining on that ordinance they want to do or not before it's presented, but this is just approving that general concept.
Yeah, so it'll come, it'll come back.
You'll see it two more times.
Okay. Mr. President, if I, if I could, um, add something also under this section of the agenda?
Yes, yes indeed. Uh, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. So, um, one thing I wanted to clarify from, um, from our last meeting and, and actually directed you, Mr. President, we had a, a conversation about your letter. And one of the things that you had brought up in there was that, you know, while, you know, we do have some budget constraints and things that we're working through, it's complicated a little bit by the property tax initiative that's on the ballot in November. And one clarification that I gave there that was actually incorrect, and I just wanted to clarify that tonight, make sure everybody understands it, the public, federal council members. What I stated was correct in that it does use the twenty twenty-four levy to determine the number. What I didn't realize is that we are working on the twenty twenty-four levy now. And so the work we are doing is setting our baseline, should that pass, for the future. So, Mr. President, I just want to apologize for that, number one, let you know that you, you actually did have it right and that, uh, and that, um, I just want to make sure that that was clarified for everybody tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you doing that. Any other business? That brings us to, uh, our last item. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.